Chairperson of the Portfolio Committee on Agricultural Land Reform and Rural Development in the National Assembly. We are here as the Portfolio Committee holding public hearings on the preservation and development of Agricultural Land Bill.
We've already visited numerous provinces such as Mpumalanga, Limpopo, North West as well as the Northern Cape. We are proud to be here in Hauteing this week.
It's the Northern Cape, not Eastern Cape.
Northern Cape.
We are now here in Hauteing visiting the people of Bronkor. We'll be moving tomorrow to Machalisbek and Heidelbeck on Sunday.
[speaking Afrika]
On Friday we'll be in Heidelbeck.
[speaking Afrika]
Allow me, as we start the session, to request all of us to stand as we sing the national anthem and I'll request all the men to take off their hats. Thank you for honoring us.
[speaking Afrika]
I want to greet in particular all women that are gathered here this morning as we pay tribute to the heroines of our country that have made us possible to enjoy the freedoms that we have in this new political dispensation. We meet on a month where we've hosted the Netball World Championships and we've also been watching the Women's World Cup, FIFA World Cup, and we have all been clued to our TVs. We therefore hope that the women of Bronkor Sprait will take lead in these public hearings and will make sure that they contribute as best as they can to uphold the legacy and the role of women in South Africa. I've already taken the opportunity of introducing myself as the Chairperson of the Portfolio Committee on Agricultural Land Reform and Rural Development. Therefore allow me to introduce the members of the Portfolio Committee. We are a multi-party delegation, members of the Portfolio Committee on Agricultural Land Reform and Rural Development who are serving in the National Assembly. And I'll take this opportunity, being Women's Month, to introduce all the women in the Portfolio Committee first. We do have the Honorable Choyteh seated to my right hand side. Honorable Choyteh hailing all the way from the Eastern Cape, the home of legends. We also, on to my left, have Honorable Mashlo hailing all the way from Limpopo Province. Next to Honorable Mashlo, we have Achpare Breyt hailing all the way from the Free State. Next to Achpare Breyt, we have the Honorable Kappa hailing from the Eastern Cape Province, the home of legends. On to my far right, we've got Honorable Muntweidi who comes and hails from the North West Province. We also have with us our members of staff from Parliament who are accompanying the Portfolio Committee. Whether it be Ndebele, Pedi, or Zulu, or even sign language, for those that are seated at home or even here, will be able to understand the proceedings of these public hearings. We also have in our midst the protection services from Parliament who will also be assisting us with ensuring that we are able to sit accordingly in these chairs in the middle for those that will be wanting to make their oral submissions in these public hearings. From Communications, we do have the Parliament channel which will be live on TV during these proceedings, but we also have our paparazzi from Parliament who will be taking pictures of everyone that is making submissions here this session. We also from Parliament have Household Services and Public Relations. This is why you see that we have been able to drape this in the colors of Parliament with our coat of arms. And this is a full room session of Parliament where you as citizens of the Republic in Bronkor, Spain, will be participating in effectively making law of Parliament. We also have officials of the department at the provincial level in Hauteing, also at the national level, who have also come to participate in these public hearings and listen to other concerns that you may have outside the bill that talk to the matters that relate to the Department of Agriculture, Land Reform and Rural Development. We also have from Public Education, members of staff that have been in the area making sure that there was public awareness and the public was informed about the bill and an invitation was extended to all of you to be here today. Allow me to give a recognition to our traditional leaders, the Royal Highnesses, and of course Mahfondo, the senior traditional leader of Amandebele, Ganzunza, at Sokulumi Traditional Council. We also have his Royal Highness, Aaron Mofu, a traditional leader from the Ndebeles at Eritabiseng. We also have from Sokulumi Traditional Council at Eritabiseng, Mr. Jack Nguni. We have again from Sokulumi Traditional Council, Philimon Masinela. We give a warm welcome to our sons of the soil, our traditional leaders, who we as Parliament are fortunate to have in our midst. Having introduced all these people that are here with us, including the community and people of Bronkor Sprait, allow me to invite Councillor Saki Duploy, the Chair of Chairs in Twane Metro, who will be representing the speaker, to tender a word of welcome. Thank you very much for the opportunity, Honorable Chairperson Nkosi Mandela. Honorable Chair, Honorable Members of the Portfolio Committee.
[speaking Afrika]
Our honorable traditional leaders, the Royal Highnesses.
[speaking Afrika]
And I'm always proud to say they are our leaders residing in the city of Twane. I haven't seen my friend, the Regional Executive Director. If he's here, I'd also like to recognize him and welcome him. It's going to be in his area. And then of course, most honored our residents from Region 7 are heartily, heartily welcomed at this engagement today. It is an integral part and it is a wonderful emphasis in our situation, our governance, government, and in legislation that we do have public participation. It's not just the leaders, the members of Parliament sitting in great town, but they also come to us and we really appreciate their presence today here. I feel very much at home because the business today focuses on agricultural land and I, myself, grew up on South African soil on a farm in the Free State. The business of the day is to discuss the management of agricultural land by discussing and it's going to be presented to us the preservation and development of agricultural land. The bill focuses on the management of agricultural land but also on production on the land where we have different kinds of farmers, big farmers who are producing, even exporting, and then very, very, very important, smaller farmers in the traditional areas. I've just driven through KwaZulu Natal and I've seen the importance of small farmers, farmers that found to be able to produce to feed their people. And once a month, the farmers, the women, and I appreciate it's Women's Month, we're looking forward to their visit, they come to Twane House and they bring their products that they've produced and we go and buy the best vegetables and fruit and whatever they've grown. We are really proud of our women farmers as well. So, in closing, as residents of the city of Twane, the Twane Metro area, we really welcome the bill that is brought to us and being discussed and eventually that will be implemented for the benefit of our people in the city of Twane. Honorable Chairperson, on behalf of the Mayor of the City of Twane and the Speaker of the Twane Metro Municipality, I would like to welcome you and your team in our area. I would like to welcome the members of your committee and also our residents and also a word of thanks to the team from the office of the Speaker who assisted in preparing the arrangements for this meeting. I thank you. Thank you for doing right. See, Bon Togoza, I'm going to need you to do right. It's interesting that you speak of small scale farmers in KwaZulu-Natal traveling this far to bring their fresh produce to Twane Metro. It could also expose some of the shortcomings in terms of the sector because Hauteing has too big a fresh produce market, one being in Machalisbek, one being in Twane. So it is something to be looked into as to certainly maximize the profits for small scale farmers so that they don't have to cover such a great distance to get their fresh produce into the market. But mostly we want to welcome and thank you for your warm words of welcome into Bronkor Sprait and the greater Twane Metro. As the Portfolio Committee on Agricultural Land Reform and Rural Development, ours is to hear and engage in public hearings on the preservation and development of agricultural land bill, which is also known as the DAL Bill, which was brought and introduced in Parliament by the Department of Agriculture, Land Reform and Rural Development and was further referred to the Portfolio Committee on Agriculture, Land Reform and Rural Development on the 2nd of February 2021. The bill seeks to promote the preservation and sustainable development of agricultural land in the entire landscape of the Republic of South Africa.
Jengoba kasi shanganenge ndava ekaga tekele. Umteto mlingwalo, uwa swony namkowale twa, eh Department of Agricultural Land Reform and Rural Development. Ogumteto mlingwa, oale twa panku Parliament, gen tusaka feperwari, kuini tui.
Currently, the subdivision and use of agricultural land is controlled through the subdivision of Agricultural Land Act known as SALA Act Number 70 of 1970, which prohibits the subdivision of agricultural land without the consent of the Minister of Agricultural Land Reform and Rural Development. SALA has been able to protect, albeit to a limited extent, the loss of agricultural land to other non-government, non-agricultural activities.
Jengoba na sa, umuti umteto mlingwalo isoso ya, ukuulu nganokutugiswa weselimo. Oguanjengaje, iselili, lisebenza, akasi komte to wenzitisi we, wana mka uwa swa kutu. Isala, owa swa uga na 1970. No, konasche ti sasaku, umteto no owa swa uga na 1970. Ukamba, ukapele abanya banja, akavatu si pambili, ekaha, yegi isala. Ipuni le umuti, begele uklawuwa, wenda o, noksota nyela wayo, kotwa na nyana abunja. Usatsoka kwa umuti, wenzia yama.
However, SALA is an old 1970 act that is administered by the National Department only and it does not conform to the constitutional requirements of cooperative governance where national, provincial, and local spheres of government have a role to play.
Jengoba na gesaniswe si le, mapwetu umuti umteto no, uwa swanya, yegi nembaro, kibenge yajila. Selle umteto waga, yegi kutoka kwa umuti, wenzia wama chuku, ojengoba na wenzwa uga na 1970. Gebaka na umuti, eminye yemite to ekona, ay sakamisana kushe, no umteto no owa swanya, yegi nemne yajila.
Further, it is only applicable to privately owned land which limits the Department of Agricultural Land Reform and Rural Development from protecting and controlling those of high-value agricultural land that is owned by the state, statutory bodies, communal land, and land that is administered by traditional authorities as led by the Royal Highnesses, Makoshi, Namakosi, that are with us today.
Yase, umteto no eskuluma gao. Use genda wa pele na enda weni, eske tekele. Namka esaswe za umuti, isinda o, esiprebe. Yegi, wenza umuti, umteto re, eskumenga o, namka ishanga re eskumenga. Ayo, ye repabi, eh agriculture, Department of Agriculture, Land Reform, and Rural Development. Enga wai, si utkenede la ukuhe, uwenza esinida o, namka. Uwenza esinida o, owa swa, sebenze, gende la isoso udi sibeti.
The bill brings the committee here today because it seeks to replace and address the shortcomings of SALA in order to curb the loss of all agricultural land in the Republic of South Africa and to protect the high-value agricultural land from further loss and degradation from non-agricultural uses by demarcating protected agricultural areas.
Yegi, umteto mlingwalo, es kuluma gao, namka ishanga re, namshane si. Umteto mlingwa, ozo si sa kulumba na isoso sa, ufigela indau, estani belagiso, apenda o, swa paga. No, uti insenzenzi swa eskona, si senzenzi swe, genle epalele, vekotu si senzenzi swe, isoso esnete.
The proposed bill intends to harmonize the need for use of agricultural land for agricultural purposes and the need for non-agricultural uses such as land for human settlements and urban development in line with special planning by various local authorities.
Umteto mlingwalo, uso pezele umuti, u isoke indau, esketre, namka espegele umuti si senzenzi swa, paga, weselimo. Si senzenzi swe, isoso de, vekotu jengoba na sibeti. Ngishonene si senzenzi swa, esisfuma na, okulumele, siwa sa uzo si sa, nompaga.
Central to the implementation of the bill once signed into law is cooperative governance where all spheres of government will have a role to play and provinces are expected to develop a provincial agricultural sector plan.
Isoso eskuulu, yo umteto no, nasele utlikitiwe, waba se umtetwe nguza, de ukuta, zadevatu. Usebenza na nibnyango esuva shumelewa kulumele, wenzana akona, yoke, yime ne sana, kisoto keinfunda, we wenzana umteto no, umuti, userebe.
The bill has implications for local and provincial governments through the formal structures that would be established in provinces and municipalities, mandating them to perform certain functions in legislations once signed into law. In this regard, the different spheres of government are expected to avail financial resources, administrative capacity, infrastructure, and the necessary training for the implementation of the bill.
Umteto mlingwalo, es kuluma gao, uso kantaga ya, ulawo, wemfunda, ulawo, wesemakaya. Yegi, uso wenza umuti, imnyango esfunda, negamaswala. Issebenzi sa, namka wenzana eskunse, oso vano umteto no, yase benza, nasele utlikitiwe, bona, wesutitiwe.
Well, why is Parliament here today? The Portfolio Committee on Agricultural Land Reform and Rural Development is here to ensure that through public participation, which is one of Parliament's most important functions, and it has a duty to involve the public in all its processes through various means. In this case, the bill, some stakeholders with an interest in the bill, responded to advertise the calls for inputs by the committee and have made written submissions to the committee for consideration.
Eli ne iba kai le, umuti si komi, esize la, ukenseki sa bona, nompaga. Ubade sa, ekfagene, namka we wenzana umteto no, userebe. Jengoba na sekese, sabeza, kapambi. Yegi, kidele, yegona, imnyango esuva shumele. Ifaga isanakwa, kidele esuva shumele, ngaba genma, namka geninye, namka gezye, inlele. Yegi, ufa wene, minye immono, ele tredidi, umuti siwa si, uwe kalsisa, nakapango wa nekitiwe ute.
However, because of the extensive subject matter of the bill and the various stakeholders that may be impacted once it is signed into law, the Portfolio Committee saw the need to extend the public hearings to provinces to ensure that the proposed legislation is responsive to the needs of all stakeholders and does not infringe on anyone's rights.
Na nyana gunja, no, i committee ibone umuti, uwi ndue she. Umuti tateka dangwa, luguza yempaati, ispana kanye, soke, jengoba nompaga. Uwenzela umuti, jengoba na sa, eminye yemite to ngenzela, itinde eminye yemya. Vekotu si funa ukenseki sa, umuti, ge bangha, lugu tumte to no, ge nompaga. Au kuli, abalu geno, abanye, aban.
We as the Portfolio Committee on Agricultural Land Reform and Rural Development have two objectives for these public hearings.
Simnyango lo, kaga tekanaga, sinen isoso esimbi, esenzua, umuti, tateka dangwa, luguza ge yini nompaga.
First of all, objectives is to engage directly with you as stakeholders from different communities or affiliations to solicit your views and inputs on the bill. In this regard, whatever position or view that you may have on the bill, it will be appreciated that you provide us with the reasons and tell us whether the bill, in its current form, will be able to fulfill its intended purposes.
Isoso eskuulu, neyete umuti, tateka dangwa, luguza ge yini nompaga. Umuti, kapango umuti, umteto mlingwalo, utlikitiwe, wesemtetwe. Si bawa ukuswa imbono, namaziswe, umuti, nizizwa nja, lingao. Vekotu sbawa, nicha kulu, wesembono, jengoba na, isoso sa, si kwanikata shkomaswa.
Where you have concerns with certain aspects or clauses of the bill, we will need you to highlight those specific areas while also making proposals on how we can address your concerns as the Portfolio Committee when we come to processing the bill.
Nange wenzela, umuti, utenna usola, umteto mlingwalo. Wabo na umuti, kunenda wana esilego, eswenza, umutu ngashasegi, namka otweni, ga, ona. Si bawa ucha kulu, uze, ucho umuti, kupi na kupi, la ubone, uktwenya kon. Vekotu gabakushe, no, uti, uze, iba, no, uti, uba yini, indawa na leo, intwe.
Our second objective as the Portfolio Committee on these public hearings is to gain an understanding and a state of readiness of other spheres of government in terms of capacity and resource availability in respect of the responsibilities envisaged in the bill and possible duplication or conflict with existing legislation and regulatory frameworks. For example, the proposed provincial agricultural sector plans vis-à-vis the existing provincial spatial development frameworks and the implementation of legislation such as the Spatial Planning and Land Use Management Act, known as PLUMA.
Beuben jenganjesi, kulumege isoso ya, utomo, yete, umuti, tateka dangwa, luka ba, sise la, nompaga. No, kon, isoso esbi, utala, utchekisisa, imnyango, esuva shumelewa kulumele. Upone, umuti, selle ikame kanga, vekotu, ipilungene na, ukwaga isanakwa, we wenzana, umuti, umteto mlingwalo, uguazu, umelela, nasele umteto. No, kon, siso utala, nezintele, jenguti, baka swaga nja, isanakwa, ubema, namka, snigena, insenzenzi swa, esiso, sibenzisa, lokan, nasile, naslima.
So as we begin our session in taking oral submissions for these public hearings, we will identify those that wish to make submissions. So I would request you to raise your hands and start on my right-hand side and then come to my left-hand side. We will take about ten hands to kick-start the session and I will request that when you start, you give us your name and surname or the affiliation that you are representing, but also state if you support or reject the bill.
Beuben jenganjesi, na kumimi, ikuluma gane, yegesele, kuluba, nompaga. Umuti, nivese, ama, siso uwi. Sizo bawa, umuti, si raki, ge kenele. Sizo utoma, kisane, sugu, yam, kisesi, kisane, sugu. No, kon, sizo utoma, umuti, nipaga misa isanakwa, si kwanekuwa, na, abo, abafuna, uklashela, lobota. Genbawa, no, konasele, upiwe, itu, uba, lugu ti, uzo kuluma, ngapampi. Si bawa utome, ngokucho, ikama, lakwa, isbo, namka ishanga, uku yakiri.
And also if you support or reject the bill.
Vekotu, sizo bawa, umuti, uze, umuti, umteto mlingwalo, ingakani, uyakani, sana, na, ona, namka we, na, uwa na wangaka, ke, kushe.
I've also highlighted that from our communications, we have people that are recording this session and it is live on our Parliament TV. And therefore, I will request all of you to not use your cameras to take pictures or do any recordings of this session because we have our own paparazzi here from Parliament that is taking pictures and covering this session.
Jengoba na, kenga veza, kapambi, si, na, abanu, abasukula pasi, vekotu, katake, goke, eni cho. Yegi, okunyesu kuluma, uze, jengoba na si, raka, ishe, we. Li raka, bloka, epala me, kunapa, daba, mugele. Yegi, soko na, galutma, katanji, se, vekotu, we, goke, esizo. Sizo bawa, agi, bagwetu, si bawa, singa, tatin, tombe, namka, sikatangi, se, ikulumo, ekona, namka, eso, raka.
And each speaker will be given four minutes to make their submission and I will request all of us to respect one another, listen to each input, and to be as quiet as possible so that all the recordings can be captured correctly.
Ngisoba, umuti, sishonpani, neyega, baki. Omunye, no, omunye, ozo, uza, ngapampi, ozo, ngenwa, yumsusu, emi, umuti, afese, goke, uktwenya. Yegese, sopa, umuti, na, uza, omuno, ngapampi, sishonpani, singa, tikase, si, singa, bancha. Estalelsi, si, wenzana, umuti, yoke, do, ai cho, no, gumbono, wa, kwanukataki, swanakere, fale.
Those that have written submissions, you are most welcome after your submission to bring them to the front. We will take the written submissions for consideration as well.
Sizo bawa, goke, la, abatlole, immono, e, uzabo pasi. Umuti, genbawa, umuti, umshamo, badege, luguza, namka, bachi, luka kulubini, ngubini. Balete, abatlole, nevo, ngapampi, si bawa, ukenseki sa, sizo utaka, siklole pasi, basicbe, na.
Can we then have the heroines of Bronco Street kick-start this session? Start on my right-hand side, any hands?
Si bawa, abaskeba, abo, abalae Bronco Street, utoma, kisane, sugu, yam. Si bawa, kena, para misa isanakwa, kesinbo.
I'm going to be focusing more on women first. So are there any women on the right-hand side that want to make submissions?
Ngisoba, ngokarela, kulu, abo, oma, kani, bakona, abo, oma, kisane, sugu, yam, abatanda, umuti, fasa, fasa, namka, opega, lobota.
Oh, there's, bo, bo, to, there, come, mama, please come forward.
Anga, utoma, imbono, du, itusia, bawa, masbawa, uzeka, kapambi.
Any other women in the forum that would like to make submissions?
Kani, ukona, omunye, oma, oti, namigi, asiso, ifuna, ukosa, la, lobota, na, konan, kapanga, uzo, sugu.
Any women on this side?
Akeshkale, kisane, soko, ne, ukona, oma, oti, awa, namigi, bilo, iba, opega, lobota.
I think as we were watching the netball championships and we were watching the women's World Cup, women got used to warming up first. So I'll take it that you are warming up first and then you will cup in the second round.
Yase, jengoba na, besukule, le, si, la, vekotu, swana, na, oma, batata, ikatangwe, he, si, vekotu, bato, kapambi, kese, mshanesi, asu, umuti, uto, uke, uke, kama, uzo, futume, sa, la, ta. Yegi, na, yegi, kesinso, si, atem, uti, sas futume.
So let me take hands from the right-hand side, any hands? Anyone, yes, come forward.
Saba, ugesa, ngapampi.
There's a gentleman with the white hat, please come forward. There's a hand in the back, please come forward, the hand in the back. Yes, oh, he's already standing up as well, please come forward. Please wait until I identify you before you come to the chairs. Any other hands on this side?
Sizo bawa, ne, ngapango, uti, senga, kapambi.
There's a hand of a young person there, if they are young, they are, they look young, so. Mayanga, yaga. Any other hand on my right-hand side?
Si bawa, uni, payi, itu, ba, uti, kisane, sugu, yasi, ulo, uti, bakona, basa, funa, ucho, uti.
Now, once we speak about agriculture, honourable councilor, deploy, it seems to be a very male-dominated sector. We want the women and young people to get involved in this sector.
Jengoba na, siku, kuluma, ge, zo, le, mosi, tabakulu, vekotu, si funa, umuti, abo, oma, bafage, sana, kulua, namka.
There's a hand there of a lady, is standing there, a young person with glasses there. That says, I'm here as well, presenting the youth, this land.
Na, nga, umbange, vekotu, tabakulu, uka na, omuncho, ti, na, minkona, kisolcha, me, kushe.
Two more hands on the right-hand side.
Chota, kisane, isinbi, iling, kisane, sugu.
Two hands, all in the front, there's a mama, please come forward, one more hand. One more hand. One more hand from the right hand side.
Chota kesa kensanga so.
The last hand on this side. Ah, you're still thinking. You've got ten people to speak before you speak so you can formulate your thoughts while you're seated there. Any hand?
Ungatuma koma next is in the one that was a kuluma ngapambo. Kesa kati isha bujungsele.
Okay, let's come on this side, one hand, there's a hand there.
Sibawa uki sanga isha uki ngapama.
All our chairs are full, so we will start with this first session. After we've taken our first round of submissions, we'll take a round from the left hand side again of people that wish to speak. Say now.
Oguwancha ngaje insa lozutosu na kala selesele yege sizo akta maga naba ishe deka kona. Ba kipenga abachoga bekena ukaas genbawa lo sizo kuula na itu wasi kulele abane.
We'll start the session therefore with Uma Ma here in front. Please introduce yourself and the affiliation you are presenting if any, and then you may proceed. Thank you.
Ikama de uso mukhalie.
My name is Sidiya Uso Mukhalie.
From, I was my own company.
Ne company ami.
Yes, so it again uki i company ami involved a ne family.
Wenzee ile uki i company ami ifage palati gisho uki lima, roma esu lima.
And then katanga ama initiative uki nhambe ufunedi land.
And then I took the initiative to go around looking for land.
And then ito lile i land, but then i problem, uneproblemu kuluga ku.
I have found the land, but there's a big problem.
Eh, i problem uki unele land kenga occupywa na umundu, but then maki tiniya cheka. Umtola uki buti unepo opo.
The problem is that there is this land which is unoccupied. Now, when I tried to find out about this land, they are telling me that eh there is a co-op.
Eh, eh, yani wa ilising agreement twelve years back.
Which was leased some twelve years back.
And then at the moment, abna ndezi ga ule yo land leo.
Currently, nothing is happening on that land.
And it's a big land, I would say, ama hekla, ama kuru. And then we feel uki si valele di ne esu abo umma. Because unesit esdi mi esu uki si sezi ule olau leo.
Eh, as mothers or females, we feel that, you know, our hands are tied. Because the land that I'm talking about, it's a very big land, it has got huge hectares on it. But there is nothing we can do as mothers or females.
Yes, so ito engi le noku ya most of the time ule olau leo. Mcheko uki nengaa kunenzela mimtole no umundu lo ya we opo. Most of the time, arimtole unetu and then unala ba ula babanga pani. Aba pani unfortunate amstore uki ngibe ngiraja. Yugo asema occupy yo olau leo. Whereas itinasifone eki sifunu uwe sevetisa yede egale.
Eh, I usually visit this land. And the unfortunate part is that in most cases, I farm foreigners. I'm sorry to use that word foreigners, but that's how we call them. They are not doing anything on that land, but we, we want to use it profitably.
So bestre, as soon as stre, because me for me, the organization though, is saying abo nega la. Because ufuna uki si bo ma, si suku mele pezi, uzi ito le neo, mye yeyi. It's not like uki si tileko opo ipuwe. But then, na ti si tu ma hekla sana niwa. Ufuna uki si diva de la neo da olayo, si suwi la we government and then si wasu uki sese something. Eh, prene isu mele uki si fu ni sene vanpala be ucho uki sizo pila ne family.
Eh, my request as someone who has started a company is that we as women, we should have a share or a certain portion of this land. So that now we can start farming and at the very same time we can transfer the farming skills to our children. Because it is clear that whether we like it or not, for us to survive, we need farming skills.
Singa chavlela ngaku lu ifu suwa uki imu kuunyamo. Alright, exo mele uki isha mekiu. Singe, yes, ito lo kuwaasi olunzu. Sen tele, sen ku na angas uki ngiraja. Because si ku no ku sevetisa i ko ma opo nomi. Ifuna abo mama wasu ku, mesli ni si do esu ma bezana na. Si bo mama, so bestre la uki. Kube kona umundu uzo kuwa uki asife le olau leo. Si sebenzi se ifuni fini ngenza ni nibona uki si sevetisa ngiraja. Singa chavlela. And uke ne tele, yes, kwama ama fans. Because niya uki kababeti ina uki nokiva ama fans. Si wasu ku suka le fans, senze isu do esu egale.
Eh, I would appreciate if you can be assisted in terms of getting the relevant department that can assist us in getting a share on this piece of land. Because as women, we really want to use this land. You know, we also need to be assisted in terms of starting a fund which will assist. We are aware that government does assist women in terms of funding. We therefore request that you or we be assisted in that regard.
And then here uki unomteto uki a umsusu umundu enda ueli. Ule olau leo, ule olau land leo. Eh, eh, uko na una masu water camps. One thing for sure, if banga de laiza uki abna umundu weyata di ne olau. Chances are, angene, and then if seban genili. Unfortunately, yuma zima uki si wa kisho, so mina ben tele uki. Stela uki ni si stige leni and this is uwa uki si kapi. And esu lutana isengete la ete ate esu bene fita, tina nabanya abantu.
Eh, I am also aware that there is a law which states that no one is allowed to affect any person who is occupying a particular piece of land. But when one looks at that piece of land from far, one can see that there is a water camp there. Chances are, those people who are occupying those water camps will end up occupying the entire, eh, you know, eh, co-op. Now, we are requesting for your assistance so that now we can also have a piece of land for us to be able to, you know, eh, do farming.
Niago.
Thank you very much.
Sanbonali.
Good morning.
Gili amoka bona, Tata Mani Amandelekse, face to face.
I am happy to see Honorable Tata Mani Amandela face to face today.
Always see Bonava chief.
Do you try to see him on the TV?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Bishop Kenny Gosi.
And Bishop Kenny Gosi.
Eh, we represent the organization, S E B Z A Uki, Region Seven Pastors Farah.
I represent the organization called Region Seven Pastors Organization.
In Broncos Bridge.
In Broncos Bridge.
It cover ama what I thought.
It covers forwards.
Now, sin a problem, sing ama solve.
We have a problem as churches.
Si asu uki, obonteto, aswanelanga si singe nele, u land, any land.
We know that leaders were not allowed to occupy any land.
And then ya bo ngaba fundis was a Broncos Bridge.
And I think the past doesn't Broncos Bridge.
Since from twenty nineteen?
Since from twenty nineteen?
Savantai COVID.
We were affected by the COVID nineteen.
Asange sesabuye le masontwe, amesu ulu ina besi son dakola.
We were unable to go back to the schools that we used as churches.
As konamwe.
Were unable to return and occupy there.
But now, sin ama application, esu afagile as pastors.
We have launched applications as pastors.
Go government.
To the government offices.
Uki si tele uki nava hipai land.
Where we plead that when they provide land.
Si asu uki kfunegu kuja.
We know that there should be food.
Emasontwe nisea lima.
In our churches, we do grow some vegetables.
Minana ngaya langkonu uzo tolago onko ku i vegetables.
Where I am, we will find every kind of vegetable.
So, si akshonipa ka kuulu uki i land ifanele i seven se i lima bantu batolu kuja.
We respect the fact that land should be utilized so that we get food and people should get that food.
And then say support anele program ekona namu.
And we support the program that has come to us today.
But ge, sin estelo so uki na chi abafundis. Skale uki nama kosu uki ifu government asiga. Na ti si tole emasontwe uki abantu, abasa konzele makaya namu.
We have a request that as churches and we also request the traditional leaders that when the government provides some land, we also be given some parts and portions of land.
Na chi bas kumbu le as a churches.
They must remember us as churches.
Langkonamina more than thirty years.
Where I stay or where I am about thirty years.
Sit.
On site.
But no title deed.
But there is no title deed issued for me.
So all churches in Region Seven?
All churches in Region Seven?
There's, there's no title deed.
No, there are no title deeds.
Abafundis by a kala.
Pastors are complaining.
Now, they are feeling uki uba Bishop Gosi agawensu msebi.
They feel that Bishop Gosi, I myself, as Bishop Gosi, I'm not doing my job properly.
But kina ngoguz tate lumsava.
Eh, then they, they occupy land on their own and illegally.
Axigashi.
That is not good.
We want to respect the law.
We want to respect the law.
Please, mi tungulungu lan si ze, we support the bill.
God bless you, we totally support the bill.
I thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Okay, sanbonani.
Eh, greetings.
Ki bingeleli kuluse pezinga pambi.
Eh, greetings to the honorable members here in the front.
SBI Parliament.
The honorable members from parliament.
Okulumalo, okulumalo PJ Hadebe.
I am PJ Hadebe.
Ki kona lagu Region Seven ku what one oh three Eritabisi.
I am in Region Seven, what one oh seven.
Engia kala, eh, so kita buli ka kuulu umanginbona.
Eh, I've got a complaint. Your presence made me happy.
Ika kuluka si ubaba unomzanu mandela.
In particular, Baba Umshonisha Umandela.
Si bona ka kuulu kuma TV.
We usually see you on television.
Si anbona na hamba ubona taleli impopo siya kala city gitinfigani.
We've been seeing you moving around the country, Le Pongo, KZN, but we've been asking ourselves, when are you coming to us?
Sinilambe le sinomele mara gomusawa inkosi, same thing ile git.
It has been our wish that you come to us through the grace of God. You are now with us.
Laba mkon Eritabisi.
Where I am, at Eritabisi.
Jengo umundu o akulele maplazi.
As someone who grew up on a farm.
Sakatke shai onje beskanyla.
We were trained by the white people.
Siniloazi elengeka ku.
We have a lot of knowledge.
Manje, gi zenga bonu uki nonu kulunisane no muu yu baba une spaces school esontwe.
I have then decided to negotiate with a certain gentleman who has got a big portion of land at the church.
Uki stelublima labo.
We requested him to give us permission to farm on that particular piece of land.
I company eh ti project eh ti kamala eh Arbuwelen Masimun Project.
Eh, our project is?
Arbuwelen Masimun Project.
Or Arbuwelen Masimun Project.
Si na bomama about five.
We've got five women.
And ne uti eh one.
And one youth who is a boy.
Yes, eh, ubaiyini.
And lastly, it's myself.
Iimi chepesene, iimi futumpati.
I'm the cheperson, I am also the one who is in charge.
Ya silima, i half ground.
We are plowing just half ground.
Manje, indwen kadanga eka kuulu, asina secure fence ene lapa. Yenga tela ngambi entela ini peto, no ma ama fenceanga sebenzi. Kuzi ngbiele lianda u, si chutwa izin buzzi, kinge kenge gisho uki abendwa nabe tubonya upe kpe la na bantu ba sebe la lapa.
Now, the problem that we are having on that piece of land is that it is not, you know, secured in terms of fencing it. So we are just improvising with whatever we get using, you know, old beds, you know, the divans thereof. Eh, our main problem there is the goats that come and eat what we have planted.
Enye i into, lapaslima kona inda uleya. Eh, i xabati efuna uma nyoro, no ma ngabi kame dinga season. Engengeengege fertilizer no ma mtsambe i ikarika. No ma, no ma nyoro kutwa i, i three, i three two three.
Our problem also is that where we are plowing, our soil is not fertile. We also request from the government to assist us with the fertilizer. It could be garlic or a certain manure called three two three so that we will be able to fertilize that soil.
So started lapa ku na eh ku two thousand and sixteen until now.
We have started there around two thousand and sixteen up to today.
Manje, besina tia buli ka kuulu uki mtsambe jongo bana. Tinasafundi isha onje beskanyla, angenge kenchwa makama wabo. So sibona kunizi ndau ezhi hezi around lapa ezifuna ama tractor. So itregeren yeze ka kuulu si fundisiwe. I see mngedwa sbanengela per taxi. Besina tia buli ka kuulu.
So for the mere fact that we were empowered, you know, whilst we were working on the farms, empowered by white people in terms of, you know, using tractors. I would appreciate if we could be assisted. Eh, I'm not the only one, we are many here around Eritabisi who have this knowledge.
Singa bonga ka kuulu umambuso unga season usponelele. Jenge season is tegeleka pantze, ene ya.
Eh, we can appreciate very much, you know, if you can assist us in that regard as poor people.
Ya angino mbozo omunye ngazi no ma ngina boza.
I also have a question, I don't know whether, eh, Chair, will you allow me to ask that question?
Ya angengezo kulume, ge landi from nineteen thirteen.
Eh, sometimes I hear eh you talking about the land issue from nineteen thirteen.
La glela bomkuluetu na bo baba vetu.
Where our great-great parents have been buried and our fathers have been buried.
So susamilui claima from two thousand and fourteen and fifteen, manje, buti sizo linda abantu, abba, 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 abba claima ku nineteen ninety six. So still ina manje, aska pendulegi, ingabe yini inkinga. Eh, 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 evalele, evalele government duty inga season goba. Siboniska disya hama, ganditina season esimiamma. So ksisagala nini goba sina i experience. Puti sina ababantu abesa, bazos, bazos fundi samara. Uzufundi sa kabo, mele bazofundi. But pesbe experience here.
Eh, my question is with regards to the land claim. We have made a land claim in nineteen, between nineteen fourteen and fifteen. Between twenty fourteen and?
Twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen. But the problem is that there is no response. We are told that we need to wait for people who made claims earlier than us. Now, another issue is that we have skills to deal with this land. Now, it is getting late. We are getting old. Uh we'll end up, you know, dying with this skill instead of using it on the land.
No ma sesukilenge sesena amanu sevet.
Even if we are old now, but we still have the strength to work.
Kinga tjabulaka kulujongobana angibona i kuluzetu. Obabuma ndela. Siabonga kaku luma sikbona. Ya temukuti ya sizo. Sisi zekurichin seven around the. Eprogon spray de anda tsoa ni ukuti. Sisi zagali jen futila ekaute. Itiboka na safundi swa. Uh umama uh. Before gena uh. Utogo titiza ukono mama dega. Where zakala Laitabisi. So senkotweneti i kamala kendi. So from nineteen ninety six until now, I can do anything I will. So ya bo.
Uh we are very much grateful to see you, uh cheperson. Uh because since from nineteen ninety six, nothing is happening. Especially we people who reside at Eritabisi, nothing is happening there. Uh before to what it is that there was a lady called.
Zoto Mashuluga.
Who tried to deal with this matter, but nothing is being done up to today. Thank you very much.
Uh sanbonani.
Good morning.
Entando uklisa abapatmampambi.
I would like to greet the honourable members in front.
O Chamela, Aaron Guai. From Vetfontein, what one oh two.
I'm Aaron MacGuey from.
Vetfontein.
Vetfontein.
In what one oh two.
In what one oh two.
Uh nchala e plaza in Lagan Noel Lancaster Centre.
I reside in Mr. Noel's farm.
Uh siya usapota i proposali eni zena.
We support the proposal that you've came, we've come with.
But with one condition.
With, with only one condition.
Ukutangege i compromise abantu bemaplazi.
You must never compromise the farm dwellers at all.
Sorry, sorry. You don't interpret English with English.
Okay.
You interpret English within the bell.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh sorry for that. Oh, ni akolesa kuloko. Oh, okay. So kuné issue ekona la ukti from, from nineteen thirteen land act issue.
There is an issue about the land acts is from nineteen thirteen.
I address egika.
It's not properly addressed.
In the whole country. Because as much as we know ukti, uh when we adopted the Freedom Charter in nineteen fifty five. It says we shall share the land. But low umshaba lowyo asabelani enough.
But that land has never been provided to us or distributed to us equally.
Ingosana yavantawa mnyama abapete umshaba.
Just a few of black people who own the land.
One nineteen ninety eight.
In nineteen ninety eight?
Benenza i issue yama land claim.
I was dealing with the issue of land claims.
Ni akabanga ukti, uh indawo eyo otwe ngabo nabapenefita after i land claim yaga nineteen ninety eight.
I think there's only one place where they were able to benefit.
Until namshanje, akuna progress.
Until today, there is no progress.
And we feel government ukti siya faila the issue yama land claim.
We feel that you government, we yasuleka kendi ndaba yomshaba.
And we feel ukti is scam because you end up waiting until you die.
Kube.
Kunga rabi ne progress. So now we are saying, government. Be decisive and twenene zenza. You can't come up with proposal, but you don't implement. You are hurting us. We are starving because of you. Sinpegi ilo on the ground level. What is happening in the national level, in the local government. I can give you example. Minalang chala konangfige ubaba ofiga nineteen fifty four.
Where I reside, my father arrived in nineteen fifty four there.
But angshushwa i owner yomshaba.
I'm not being threatened by the owner of the land.
Ngishushwa umuntu ofiga ati ulizile.
I'm threatened by the person who is called himself a lisa.
Ulizisanjana omunyu mundo ekamreni na mungshel ekamreni.
How do you allow a person to lease? Where, where the room or the place belongs to me or belongs to somebody else.
Ukfiga kwalo umlungo bati usmit.
When Mr. Smith arrived.
He grazing yet you have a lawyer by inga.
Our grazing land was reduced.
Si fele yingomo more than ten.
Our livestock have died, about ten of them.
Tinabe tu, we don't need to ukti, we have to refer on the book how to make farming.
We can't, we don't refer to the book.
We grew up in a farming, we know that thing. You can come with your book and.
Sorry, sorry.
I will do it properly.
Sorry, Mama, if you can't interpret English into the devil. Then we should have an individual interpreter. Because he's speaking in English and then interpreting English. Thank you. You can continue speaking in English.
So siakela ukti, uh government, in a proposal.
So we kindly request to the government because I have a proposal.
Lenda by your ukti, selinde ndaba yama land claim. Ababa vetu seva shoni.
The issue for us to wait for the land claims is impossible because our forefathers and fathers have already.
Seselening king.
We are now in trouble.
Stello uktis hambesema loksi.
We are being told to relocate to the locations.
Nasiscamu velas galakol.
There is the scam.
City government isikela nitengelen abanbema plaza in umshaba. Kungali nduale process. You, you look who's yama land claim because he are delay.
We kindly request the government to repurchase the land for the people who are residing on the farms because this thing is being delayed for so long.
Iluma za ndaba ye food security.
It affects the matter of. Viele kagokulha.
Twenty twenty one. Umlungo okache e plaza in obulele ngulweza mezi twelve was.
In twenty twenty one, one of the leasing white person, he killed several pigs, my livestock there.
Nkulengse ngamina ngambi ngote ngisi ibisi mamilo.
I used to milk some cows and sell milk in Mamilo.
Ngina tiba bani ipiman.
I never said to my father even once I to request money.
Namshanja vanto anabe tubafuni male git no mi ngomo zokona lapesbayen.
Today, our children are requesting money from us even when we do have livestock and cows.
Because it's itkindeselegi.
Because we are being oppressed.
Si bawa government asfage imali lapfanele konan.
We kindly request the government to put some funds where it's supposed to be.
Abesa ngafagimali. Angamonitar.
And when he does put the money, he must also monitor.
And si baba ndu stale maplazi.
And we as people who are residing in the farms.
Siavau umbuso etusi ni government.
We kindly request our government.
Atpele lenda buguti spigumeze ngoba uktis baba npe maplazi.
Let it end there. We can't continue being suffering like this because we are farm people.
Ngale pile ni proposal.
With this proposed bill.
Bestela i government i pegue ukti water the future and advantage and benefits of the farm dwellers emaplas.
We kindly request the government to seek and, and look deeply ukti. Ingomo so labando abashale maplasi ni li ni ugrake lapambi likiloku.
We support the bill.
Niya wa mugela umteto mlingo.
Siato gosa.
Thank you.
Uh itanda oktata lituba. Ngitisi anamugela. Uh region seven Eprogon Spray.
I'd like to take this opportunity to say we welcome you in region seven at Broncospray.
Espati mandazetu. Minangoveka mon Simon ngoba Mashang.
We warmly welcome you, our honourables. My name is Simon Mashang.
Uh. Ki ingachonje ukti, tina emaplazi sa su swa.
I can state that we were chased out of our farms.
Sa siwa ezindawenes nanes izabelo.
We were relocated to a smaller settlements.
Ye ukfitjani nduaya susa emaplasi ni ukti amajelo aweko.
The main reason that we, we were relocated from the farms to the settlements is that there were no grazing farms.
So i owner yalenda o ngiyeyanelu i lao majelo lao.
So the owner of that particular farm, he was the one in charge for those, that grazing land.
Lenda weskiyo lapayertapseni yaba konan ngabo nineteen eighty nine.
Eritabisi, where we are residing, it was established in nineteen eighty nine.
Uh ukfiga kwe tula pasabona ukti. Gunestingo ukti sibe nayo ifuyo.
When we arrived there, we saw the need to have livestock.
So savanemomo, abanyaba nembuzi izinvu. Imbuso kufuga kufuena abantu baba nesindungu.
We had, some had cows, some had goats, sheeps. Uh very, every particular kind of livestock you can think of.
So i problem ea vela ukti isuane azfunegi pagatwi wemis.
But the only problem we had is we cannot dwell or reside with the livestock in our, where we are, we are residing.
So in municipality yavona ukti gunestingo ukti abatu bakisho pagatwi wemis.
So the municipality saw the need to relocate people to another place.
So gaba indawo nyana nje ngani.
So we were left with a small portion of land.
Lasti konan krishe kungava about plus minus eh hundred and something. Ye 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 itandi nje edmane.
The place we are occupying is very, very small. It can be plus minus hundred and something of, of the living stands.
Enenge lianda o vanto vanen komo, vanen buzzi izinvu. Kanye eh eh nengulu.
People there have cows, sheep and pigs.
I problem ekona lapa.
The problem we are facing there.
Ukti lianda o oktala isisecure.
Is that that place, first of all, it's, it is not secured.
Mundo je wongena je kswen espaenu vela imbuso akuslallegi linkomo. Bate te te we ngendela kufune ba bafuna ngako.
Someone can just get into the, the, where your livestock is, is residing and do whatever they like, picking and taking what you have as livestock.
So i problem ekona ukti magufunega isisecure iti of lianda o ivale mchambi i kanjelo. Kubene structure swaliwa. Ukti abantu kfanale ukti benze ama co-op.
For us to secure those barns where our livestock is dwelling. We only have to, the only choice we have is to, to create co, what we call cohorts.
And i challenge ekona, ukti. Go we research yamengana ngenzile. I guko co-op ekonuk locate a hundred yavantu ngapagatwa.
According to yu kubululo that I have made, a small anyana kubululo there. Is that there are no cohorts currently occupying that particular place.
The minimum is only five yavantu fantu bafa ngapagatwa de co, cohort players of yinzi.
Obnanibabando that you can put into that cohort is only five people.
And uwenzaleo cohort is plus minus five thousand rand.
And to establish that particular cohort is plus minus five thousand rand.
Oben ukti eh. Masidisya enza sibomopi saza mukasa saza mukuzutugi saleo malai iko.
And as we see, we are trying to, to raise some funds to, to create that cohort. But we do not have funds.
And eh. Le governmente tu ea zigou ukti. I, i lesma lasnazo. Enenge pagati wemchato abantu by two. We yekube no, no gungazwa. Ba foster abantu kuti ba joina enenge five minimum. Of feature vanbatu deka by two. In the marriage is kobe namati wars. But now they, they force us.
So now the problem is that the government, our government knows that we are facing this tragedy. For example, there are two people who are involved in this, in this particular matter. Like in the, in the marriage, you know. Sometimes there are divorces in marriage because two people are unable to, to harmonize together. So we're pleading the government to, to be, to take part in this matter.
Ifuna ugleta indawo yama cohort labashangan soko nabantu by five.
I want to bring this matter of cohorts where it, it consists or comprises of five people.
Goba even konan lapa ngsuka koner Tapsi. Unamako opu ezindawo laba beke konabanaba groupi.
Because even there in Eritabisi where I'm residing, there are places of cohorts where they put people as groups.
Laba batu dana bana by five ngapagatwa ndawo leya.
Those people are fighting, all five of them, inside those grouping areas.
I reason uktu bape di title deed one.
The reason is that they own one title deed.
And it title deed ogonuki seven si sangapantewalo omunyo chat e na.
And the reason, the, the problem with the title deed is that you cannot utilize it unless you have your spouse.
So mchambi le bill ifinga proposal, ukti under one eh title deed. Kubene nama subtitle deed mcham. Omunyu mundo yonakonu ukti ifiswa effect us. Akonukatawanekasai seven si se enaywa. Gobi vela ogomundo funux seven sama two.
So my opinion on this bill is that when the title deed, the main title deed is being issued. Let there be also subtitle deeds that we can utilize without the need to consult with the one who is possessing the main title deed so that we can continue to, to, to work on the land.
So i governmente ngakatalere la ukti abantu banigasengapambili ama plaza. No ma ezindawo yan. What is the problem? And indawo nabanga i seven si si bangai solvaja. Goba bashi abantu nje nama problem esepa ham. As long when you register iluko opo akobagdigasindawa basanandawa na.
So we kindly request the government to take consideration on, on the matter of those people who are already owning the title deeds. When they do not see the need to utilize the land. Let the government take the further steps to help and assist those people who have the some eh, who will want to use that particular land. So that they have the permission to use the land instead of just leaving the land lying there alone.
So ogoktri na mthela ukti gile bill. Nifage ukti ngapagatwa cohort na vanitu by five. Omunye no omunye ubane peace yaki aso konuki seven si sa one. Ma ra angapagatwa leo cohort.
So lastly, may you kindly add in this bill that in one cohort that has five individuals. Let each individual have the right to utilize the land equally.
Uh sanbonani. Eh kamala mutemba mapena ntsalanga pe daily plot, what one oh five.
My name is Temba Mapena from David Turn, what one oh five.
Daily plot, daily plot.
Daily plot.
Yeah. Uh I pilise asse up the party. Siangava zayo. Cause minangnafoye. minangna four years in peace in farming, but I haven't received anything from the government.
We do accept the bill, but I have some speculations here and there because I have four years been working as a farmer, but I don't see any support that is coming, more especially eh for the particular side that I'm working on the farm from this bill.
Eh, the first year, ngachelu ugu ti I must register a company and then government will come on board, but till today, nothing happened.
On first year, I was told to register a company and I did that, but till today, nothing has, has happened to show further progress.
Eh, this year, I was likely to be part of a Howting Young Farmers Award.
Eh, unyaga lo, ngibene chutuluku ba sangana nabanya, bonketani balai Howting endabeni zo guglima.
Eh, apadila, vela abandu ba chavalinga na nati, so ah, accessing a small scale farmers, seba gugule because of the support abay to lo government.
Without us as young farmers, most of the farmers have already grown, they are old. So I'm amongst the few youngsters who are doing this farming eh thing.
Eh, besibu, nukumama application lapay eh, purpose in agriculture, then we apply, then must figure for eh feedback or a report, we are told ugu ti eh, the application program eh, eh province, axi eh, yellow, axi alaibron or eh province. So we request ugu ti, if the application eh failed, at least bak, bakjel ugu ti, application eh ke fele because of one and two, but about, abakjeli next.
So sometimes the, eh, the government, the Department of Agriculture does issue some applications and we do take so those applications and apply. And when we, we are waiting for the feedback, we are being told that eh, this application is for the, is for the province, is not only for the region, like a particular region like in Bronkosprayte. So we are requesting that that should be taken into consideration as well, so that we are clear.
And even indawo yama voucher, because ama vouchers e abona eh thing is oma Facebook, but Amari Pharma's haven't received any vouchers.
And then in the matter of vouchers, we normally see on Facebook, some vouchers are being sold, but we never get to get hold of those vouchers.
Eh, bestrela i department, if the application eh fail, bakjel ugu ti, if fail eh because of one and two, so that ukonuklu ngisa, and next year u apply eh ga, ngia bo.
So we kindly request the Department of Agriculture to keep us posted as to whether our application is failing or passing and when or what to fix, so that the application can be resubmitted for it to be reconsidered as a passing application. Thank you.
Lochanoke pambili, insalun gogwatsugana.
Greetings to all of you honourable members.
Eh, ochamunga pambili, gule yama shango eh, konala Bronkosprayte, Evet Fontaine Farm, Farm five two one.
My name is Lea Mashango from Bronkosprayte Farm five two one.
Engizala panga pambili, ngoso, ngoso glila, kineslilo.
I'm standing before you this morning because I have a complaint.
Ngitala endaweni konala Evet Fontaine.
I'm dwelling in a particular place here in Evet Fontaine.
Ngafiga lapo nineteen seventy-nine.
We arrived there in nineteen seventy-nine.
Ki kulisele abandu abam lapo, manje se inkulsa nen zugulu.
I grew up my, all my children there, even my grandchildren.
Manje, ngisevensa ngai agriculture, ngisevensa ngokuza izinkuku.
I work in agriculture, eh, I, I work, I'm raising some chicken.
Gonaingo twenty thirteen isatala i cooperative.
In twenty thirteen, we established a corporation, cooperative.
C five.
There was five of us.
Twenty thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, twenty fifteen, ibonkebe shakwasala minangi one.
Eh, in twenty fifteen, all of them just disappeared. I was the only one left.
Ma ngisengasevensa ngi one from twenty fifteen until now.
So I've been working alone since twenty fifteen until now.
Ikinga yami ugu ti ma ngitinga applya ko governmenti, i governmenti iti angina, angiko, i kamalame aliko eppepe ne angina title deed, se kfunele ma ngapplya, ngikale omunye okona ku title deed, nama angazi, angazi ngendro engenzago.
So the problem is that when I want to apply to the government, I'm being told that I do not possess any title deed. So for me to apply successfully, I have to request someone who possesses a title deed, even that, even when that particular person does not know what am I applying for.
Ikinga yami lapo, isi za so ti minangi sala gule o cooperative, ngoba minangya supportan, supportan abantuan abam.
So the reason for me to be in that cooperative is because it supports me and my children.
Manje, kenga yamo ugu ti ma kfunele ngi applya, nje ngoba se ngichule, kfunele ngikale ongazi lutu ngomsebensa yami.
So my problem is that when I have to apply now, I have to request someone who has no, little or no idea with what I'm, I'm going to do.
Eh, ne kenga yami, indawo yeskemu i konna, ikinga yami, ngifige lapo nineteen seventy-nine, manje, sengekutola umde, and still unqualified gule yondawo.
And I'm still complaining with the matter of scam because we arrived in nineteen seventy-nine, now I have grown, I'm closer to my pension and I haven't been receiving anything from the government.
Ay ugu ti angtolanga next, i kamalame aliko ku title deed, i, indawo layo ine title deed, gotoa i kamalame aliko ku title deed.
Not that I'm not receiving anything, the matter is that I do not have a title deed. My name is not written on the title deed.
Nksakela umbuso ubonelele.
I'm kindly requesting the government to, to foresee on this.
Goba indawo yami ihambi le ifigile, angazi ngabiza kamalo muntu, o, o atenge la abantu layo yondawo, i kamala, indawo, indawo yami, i konna uyegotoa, aray pumelelis.
Because my name is with the individual who used to purchase the land for other individuals that I've been working with. It's just that I don't know if I'm allowed to mention that individual's name.
Get to goza, ngitemutis kalo samisokzoral.
Thank you. I hope my pleading will be heard from the government.
Eh, ninja ni, namtsanjeh.
How are you today?
Genkimela panga ngiposhia.
I'm standing here as posha.
Eh, ish diazi, ish, isongbe talento mara, ngizoe kulumage ngilele, bo ne, maybe abange maso understand.
I'll deal with this, maybe others will understand me.
Namtsanjeh, yowangimela, ngizoba kulumage kosi.
Ah, as I'm standing here, I heard people talking about the chief in kosi.
Songazi tinkosi, mtlambi shala gopi, den.
Not knowing where the in kosi or the chief resides.
Songi ne problem ebantu ina ngesa, ngibantu ni abakulu, isisproblem and eh, I hate it. Angfunu kulumi English, angfunu kuluma, isindebele, abanepu, shuti banngizwe, so yavon.
I want to speak isindebele, so that they understand me.
Ugu ti, mtsambe, nan ngenzeka, unen kosesile since ikotala i covid nineteen.
If there are any chiefs which are there.
So.
Since covid happened.
Eh, yenzakala gula, palangshala kon.
A problem happened in where I reside.
So leo problemi, ba try lewi solve, ba isolve ayo.
Others tried to solve that problem for me.
But in, bo na ngatik ngikale, anye i problem food.
But it's, it's, appears as if it's another problem over another problem.
Yes, it's because eh, gushu ugu ti ma ngenzeka, since minawana, mzo beka umlandula ana, o serious.
I'll just narrate by history, a serious one.
Ugu ti, since goba konna i in kosi, ba ti ba shongu jesu.
As he's speaking, that there was once a lord called Jesus.
And eh, kuwa i problem ugu ti, mtsambe ba shugu ti, le yon kosi, izaba nguposhi yanjani ngoba mina, gazin kosi namzis konna ngapa.
Since we have a king called Jesus, I just struggling to understand how does this king came into the place since we have traditional kings.
So i kuwa i problem ugu ti, since kwenze galoko, minangeki ngaba i kosi, ngi okpata bo baba lapabane mali, minanginaga himexing, bacha mele, just like that, ngama spirit isakona, namanyanga namsebensi.
Since I am a woman, I can't become a king and I can't go and take the place of eh, forefathers, of our fathers or our kings, because I am a woman.
I'm the woman and eh, nugune problem ugu ti, uma banduseba ngabiza ngai kosi pe la manje. Uzakbo na galoku, nyagwami na ngbache lugu ti, ishin, ngintomba zana, ngsi kosi, kosi isakona, ngenga chatum sebensi wengosi.
I, since I am a woman, I have no, um, no one can come and call me a king since I am a woman. So I'm struggling to understand why eh now I have to be there since I am a woman in a place of the kings.
Songi rapela ugu ti, ninga ngabizinge kosi matota, na bo baba, ngoba kmele, izintoleses negi nisichamele, mina, lapalangsheli konan ngizichamele, and eh, indawo yami, langshala konan, and eh, ngpuma, kapagati wemeli, and eh, nama femeli sama nega nama problem. So inkinga masimelezi, ziroteta, ziroteta, ba ngaba achinchala, ba achinchangami, just like that. And I don't like it. We are once yankulme skua, so I don't tend.
Please, 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 my request is, don't call me a king. I am a lady, I am a wife, I am, I am a lady and I'm a woman, so I can't handle some of the problems.
Songi, bawa kulu ugu ti, mtsambe, ningalungisala pa, nina, eh, ni, izasimchachas kulu, ngoba ishi, kuwa i problem, isirasi, tinasisopatu msebenzi, asana malasana neksi, and eh, askali ngaloko, angfunu ugu ti, mtsambe, ngangareza, i pointe ngangalazi, angfunu rezi, pointe, eh, ni zobe ni understand ugu ti, angeganga opatu msebenzi, enga zankenga nigelo ona, indwe yewan, i first number one.
I just want to.
I point number one, yeah, ugu ti, angengo opatu msebenzi, abanya bandu abafundile, abakjeli ndulweni, and eh, ni, kunasi rizi, na isiri zin dweni.
I can't come here and work since I'm not appointed, so I don't have a right to do a work or a job because of I'm not appointed. Actually, this is your job to do since you are appointed.
Gabaran zombiye la pants.
Thank you.
Tu melan?
Greetings.
Libizwa lakaki, nan ke len kosi.
My name is Inkelen Kosi.
From Ekangala?
Eh, from Ekangala.
Tasa, grupo eh barinki WASP.
Under the group called WASP.
Grupo eh luane lambo me.
Eh, this is a group that is fighting for women.
Illing abuse.
And then eh, against abuse.
What is WASP?
Eh, what is this WASP?
WASP is a women as safety promoters.
Eh, WASP, enue eki eh, women?
Women as safety promoters.
As safety promoters.
Yeah, rekamo, reberaki sa na lema CPF.
So what we do is we cooperate eh with the CPF's.
Hari lewezi, hari lewelezi CPF, kiba twadi bahu na, re na rekamo tase habo.
Basically, when we look at the CPF, we regard them as our parents because we are operating under their direction.
Yes, kaki libuli tore, re luane la, re, remontoenyan, abuse.
I have already told you that we are actually at war, we are fighting abuse.
Ke re bo mama, magalis, mo kwe ding eh.
So I want to say eh with regard to women, particularly in this month.
Ke re fo wati kabo mama, pambili ngabo mama.
I want to say forward, women, forward.
Ke re fo wati ama kosi ga, zira arzu lempele luna basadi. Adito why onare abuse ywa.
I wonder actually why are we being abused?
Onare le basadi remontoeyi.
So we as women are at war.
I wonder retoriselo, retoriseto eh.
I'm not sure exactly why are we eh ill-treated.
Eh, because of remagwala adids.
I wonder whether it is because we are cowards, I don't know.
Re luana leba na, re, rebula ywa leba na bahu na.
We are being killed by our own children.
Ra rape ywa gam.
We have been raped.
And eh, hapeha be.
And another thing is.
Mo kwe ding eh.
In this very month.
Onabo mama, reza advantage hap.
We as women are taking an advantage.
Retorisabonta.
Eh, we are now actually abusing men.
Re aga obani mulawaya melo onabo mama.
And this is simply because we know that the law is on our side as women.
Eh, hona lebona, debaylo ba chiki fetz, komahaing abo.
There are men actually who are being abused in their own homes.
And eh, bona, de, gore butata butoma hinta, de aga toma are, haberi.
And this problem actually begins as soon as a man in the house eh, reports that he no longer works, he's unemployed.
Eh, butata butoma tem.
Now that's where the problem begins.
And eh, na kwan tata bereka, ne kimetsi mo haufi mo bo mama.
And at the time when he, he was still employed, I kept him very, very closer to myself.
Ne kitse ba wakinta.
I knew I respected him as a man.
Kache kokaba nasabe reka.
Now today, because he's unemployed.
Axana tavalie.
It's like I don't care about him.
Bo mama, aribeng, lidipe, lumovo, nta te bahu na lemo ba nembahu na.
Eh, women, I would like to say, please, let's have a soft spot for our husbands and for our children.
Ra ito bo meki mikoko, toko di kerake ne komahaing.
We know that women are being regarded as a rock at home and at the churches.
No, that hori nta, teki wana.
Now today eh, the tables have turned, we regard them as children.
Mo se so kanguana ha.
So then take them as your children.
Bu pele, bo toto la pele, luto bana lele rat, ka.
Life will continue and love will prevail.
Kabana ha utama utama isiwanta, teka muntu.
Because now, when a man is starting to be abused within the house.
Ba, nabatozea mulao, o le hori, gane go hay. Itore wana, ha toma anye zile, na anale mona yo, umsabwai, utolwana, uto pele bu pele, bo abu bo nin konku.
The children will now take that as an example and as an education. Tomorrow, when they have grown old, they have their own families, then they will do exactly the same thing which they have seen at home, abusing them.
Eh, oza example, lukabashi manyana, mo, hona le manane omo di TV.
Take for an example eh, what we see on TV eh, regarding some young men.
Eh, ba, bo, oza tolo wana, ba mutisohwa, arai, nagohinta, te na yira mama so.
You, you find that when they ask a young man, why do you do this? Then they will say, no, but this is what my father was doing at home.
Eh, ugu ti le tutu mb.
So he's been actually eh, 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 bad education has been imparted to him.
So diako, ba bo mama, ariahe ma, lapaa ru.
So women are making an appeal, let's eh build our families.
Bara me obuchale, o, achali lapana haye.
They say a smart woman will build her family.
Hey, adito refo, minute akeban pilenyo, na fe di lo rebiya.
I don't know whether the time allocated to me is over, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody.
Ya togozangi, bawa glochisa wakumundo kon.
So I'm a farmer in the area and I'm representing my wife, who is the owner of the farm, can you believe? Um, and she's one of the few farmers in the area, um, that is a woman, which is really great.
Ning, ningbo na nginje, nami ngimlimi, gotoana umundo tosa pambili, ngumba wa wa, mtsangria kolalok, gotoana ngenzeka gunjaalo, mara nami ngimlimi, kiamsege.
She unfortunately couldn't be here today, she's just had a foot operation.
Si, bawa ugu chobe kutu, si bawa nganabe, zukut, ngikakonu kuwa konana mtsanjeh esee, ngibanga lo ugu ti uweze namkawiyalhi inzo.
So I'm going to be representing her.
Yegaye ngichamele, ye nanani ngbo na nginje.
With regards to the bill, um, I think there's a few things that needs to be looked at in terms of refinements. Um, I think on the whole, the, the bill is quite good and to be trying to protect the agricultural, um, land is very important. land is a very important aspect.
Do you want to say, eh? Because I'm not going to be able to help you.
The Act talks a lot about the protection of land and looking at the correct zoning and that. Um, chapter two, part four, and paragraphs eleven, twelve, and thirteen speaks, speaks to that.
Do you want to say, eh?
The concern that we have as farmers is that it doesn't necessarily address the environment around us.
Because I'm not going to be able to help you.
There are two areas of concern for us. Firstly, is, eh, other operations other than agriculture moving into the area, which is causing environmental impacts which we cannot allow. The examples of it, we have a mine that is dumping coal at a siding close to us that is now affecting the groundwater.
Do you want to say, eh? Because I'm not going to be able to help you.
We also have, um, a manufacturing concern that's moved in producing silicone without any environmental impact or without the necessary licenses, also causing severe, um, respiratory problems in both the people in the area as well as the livestock.
Because I'm not going to be able to help you.
So, this is just some examples of what we having to endure and to deal with. And I think it's important that as part of the Act, we look at how do we ensure the food safety? Because these things are affecting crops and livestock, which ultimately end up in our food supply.
Because I'm not going to be able to help you.
The second area of concern is the security of our stock. We are losing stock, both crops and livestock, on a, on a scale you cannot believe. We have even had to such an extent that some of the farmers in our area have sold up the entire stock and stopped farming. That is a serious concern to our food security and the use of the agricultural land, which is now just lying dormant without anything happening on it.
Because I'm not going to be able to help you. Do you want to say, eh? Do you want to say, eh? Because I'm not going to be able to help you.
So, I think in short, um, I do support the Act, but I think there are some refinements that need to be made to ensure that we are doing what the Act, um, has actually set out to try and achieve. Thank you very much for your time.
Because I'm not going to be able to help you. Because I'm not going to be able to help you. Because I'm not going to be able to help you.
Now, thank you for that first round of oral submissions.
Because I'm not going to be able to help you.
On the public hearings on the preservation and development of agricultural land bill.
And I've been, eh, because I'm not going to be able to help you.
At least, eh, we had a good kickstart session with women participating and, eh, showing that they were ready and didn't need that warm-up session.
Because I'm not going to be able to help you.
We are hoping to see more hands now from women coming into, eh, the, eh, participation.
Because I'm not going to be able to help you.
But I must also state that from the first session, eh, we have picked up that there are also matters that are not actually relating to, eh, the bill and, eh, that we are looking into in terms of the preservation and development of agricultural land bill.
Because I'm not going to be able to help you. Because I'm not going to be able to help you. Because I'm not going to be able to help you.
So, some of the issues are actually relating to the programs that the department have and, eh, the, eh, shortages in terms of service delivery.
Because I'm not going to be able to help you.
So, I will at the end of the session be inviting the members of, eh, the department, officials of the Department of Agricultural Land Reform and Rural Development to give input on the issues they've had from your submissions.
Because I'm not going to be able to help you. Because I'm not going to be able to help you.
Allow me to therefore acknowledge the Chief Director in the Hautean Provincial Office, eh, that is tasked with shared services, Centre for Service Delivery Issues, which is Ummama Rachel Masango.
Because I'm not going to be able to help you.
I'd also like to acknowledge, eh, Ms. Lydia Busoga, the Director charged with the responsibility of land use and soil management of, or for the P D A L bill.
Because I'm not going to be able to help you.
Lydia Busoga.
Lydia Busoga. And, eh, oh, oh, she's part of, eh, she's a girl. And I was like, oh, I'm going to help you. Because I'm not going to be able to help you.
Some of the issues raised are looking at service delivery in terms of the municipality and the greater Chwanem Metro.
Because I'm not going to be able to help you.
So, I would like, eh, to request, eh, the Council of About to, to deploy, to take note of some of these issues so that we may afford you an opportunity at the end to respond to some of the issues that you've been able to note in these proceedings.
Because I'm not going to be able to help you.
We now gonna take hands from the left-hand side and get into the second session of our oral submissions.
Because I'm not going to be able to help you.
I see, eh, His Royal Highness has raised his hand to speak, so please come forward. Please take a chair, Your Royal Highness. Please take your chair. Thank, thank you. Eh, I will, eh, as I said, be biased to women since it's Women's, eh, eh, Month. Eh, there's a hand at the back with, eh, lady with a green sweater. Please come forward. There's also another lady with a orange-looking jacket, eh, there. Eh, any hands of... Oh, here's a very enthusiastic woman, eh, in the second row. Please come forward. Come forward. Any other hands from women on this side? Please have a seat, boy. His Royal Highness is speaking on your behalf, isn't it? And so... No other hands of women, so I'll take any other hand on the left-hand side. So, we have a hand of young men in the front. We have a hand of the gentleman with the blue cap. We have a hand of the gentleman at the back. We have, eh, a hand of the, eh, gentleman with the black and white striped top. We have a hand of, eh, the gentleman with the red jacket. Are many more seats? One? Okay, we have one seat. Let me take the hand of the gentleman right at the back with the blue hat. So, how many hands were left here? Two hands, three hands? Three hands. We'll come back and take another round after this session. We're not rushing anywhere. Parliament is here for you. We're gonna make sure that every speaker gets an opportunity to speak. His Royal Highness will speak standing, so, eh, please accommodate him. Thank you. We may proceed with the first, second session.
I would like to greet everyone.
I'm the Chief MP Mashango. I welcome you all, I greet you all, even the officials from the government. I won't be that long. And I do, I did hear the matter of, eh, land, eh... My question will be on the sharing of this land. I want to understand whose land is being shared to whom.
Because the municipality has, says he has his own land and the chief, the royalties have their, their own land.
So, now, I want us to be clear as to which part of land is being talking, referred to because people as we speak are fighting out there. They are fighting for land. So, we just want to be clear as to how to share this land and which land is being shared.
We don't want to cause chaos in the community because this, the, the government has, eh, 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 a part in this. So, it establishes something and then people start fighting, and then the government comes after when the people are already fighting for matters such as, eh, land sharing. Let me tell you. I was residing in Mpumalanga, and when this government started to allocating this land, they took my nation to be in Verina in Sokulum. My entire nation is there in Verina at Sokulum when the royalty was being established. I've been talking about this matter for so long, and the government doesn't take any consideration of, on this matter. So, my request is that I want that nation of mine from Sokulum to come and vote in Hautean, but no, that, that the nation is only located on, at Mpumalanga. The bigger portion of, mm, 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 that I own as a chief is in Sokulum, but most of it is still falls under Mpumalanga. As I speak, the nation is giving some outcry. They want to come and apportion the land from the Hautean part, but that doesn't, does, is not happening because they are still being allowed to occupy the land in the, the Mpumalanga site of the, of that particular area. So, I want, just, I just want to be clear as to... Is this, is this law fair enough? Because now, we have presented our problems to the government, but this has not been taken into consideration. So, I want to know that what is going to happen going forward from now? I kindly request you, the nation, to also consider this matter and know that we are all in the same page as we doing this plea to the government. I can't say exactly whether I do accept the bill or not because most of the things that were being proposed since I was still young, they have not been done until now. I have grown old and nothing is happening. False promises continue to occur from the government. So, in those ways, I will sit down and listen to other people. So, personally, I do not accept this bill because I see that apportioning land for people is the right thing to do. Because if the land is open, for example, in my land, I, we do accept the, the apportioning of land because we want the nation to benefit. We are going to apportion the land for the farmers to farm the land, but the title deed belongs to the chief. I would like to thank you.
My name is Pelele Gebashi. I reside in Broncall Street. I'm greeting parliament. I'm greeting parliament, parliament members, and you are happy that the parliament has been brought to us here. I have a company by the name of...
Gopa Wood.
Gopa Wood.
I specialize in farming. I'm a farmer.
I grow vegetables as well as the chickens. I have a list in Sokulumi. Where we work. It's called an agri park there. I support the bill. But I have some other requests about the bill. If we can be provided with more agri parks, because we need them here in Zwanem.
And in Gabi, I'm a vegetable. I pin the ifag in my livestock as well.
Not solely for vegetables only. It must also include livestock. The other issue I want to touch is the land claims. You should deal with this issue seriously. While I was still short of the place to work on, I just worked. I loitered checking the place to work. There is a number of vandalized farms that are being not attended to.
They are not utilized.
And the foreigners are just occupying these places because they are not... If you go to the municipality, you find that it was registered on another person's name, and that person cannot be found. And if the farm is just dormant there, nobody is working there. We want to work there. I am still new in farming. I'm not going to be able to grow in farming if I don't have enough place to work on. We plead that parliament help us get the place to work. The other issue I'm pleading for is that agriculture be included in the curriculum of the schools. While the children are still young at school, they must be taught agriculture so that they grow up knowing about agriculture. If you can lay as with the Department of Education, I think that will be better.
And also, go on, agriculture as well. They never had idea how to run a business. What is money? If we can also have business studies as schools and be compelled, so that...
And this in schools should be considered as business, so that they grow up knowing agriculture as business, so that they are able to sustain themselves as they grow up. We have to have the position in agriculture here in Bronkon Sprit. So that people will be able to be educated about agriculture in Bronkon Sprit. As I sit down, let us consider farming as black farmers. I deal with broilers, chickens. I have a problem of the market. I just go among the community selling my broilers or my chickens. And people sometimes they are failing to pay me. This is discouraging me, and it's suppressing me in my business. We also need abattoirs for our chickens so that we are able to grow as goldie companies and others and be able to sustain ourselves. Thank you. I think this will go forward and grow so that we are able to sustain ourselves.
Greetings. Greetings to all. My name is Wusisiwe Giyane. I reside in the place named Motorfondene. Including some of the farms nearby. I have a company called Nail Trading that is trading.
My company is Nail Trading and Project, trading as nail chickens.
My company name is Nail Trading Project, but is trading as a company chicken.
Sorry. Let us... the request that you don't translate English with English. Please stick to one language. If you are speaking and making a submission, you make it in English so the interpreter can interpret in the bell. Don't interchange. Stick to a language that you want to present with and make it easier for the interpreter to stick to the language. Thank you.
So now, I am also a member of WATS Forum. Which means... and the leadership of Jwanisimwena, which means workers, occupiers, dwellers, and tenure forum. WATS Forum. Okay. So now, last year, we had this kind of sitting, although it was in a different of here, state of influence, although it was parliament, and I submitted the issue that we are currently facing. Although we are not the only farm that is experiencing that issue, I'll try to touch base on it again. Okay. In the year of 2001, if I recall very well. To which the department jumped to sell our farm to a private person to which we were residing in. From there, our farming rights were taken away from us. Growing up, we were having livestock and having crops. They gave us a portion whereby we could do our crops and stuff. Therefore, we were selling our livestock in... what do they call it? Okay. So now, we'll go to Tuesday. We go to Bronkon Sprit to sell our livestock. And then Saturday, we are going to Sandra, selling our livestock. And then Wednesday, we go to, I think, near Kaline, to sell our livestock. Now that our farming rights have been deprived, we are unable to do that anymore. Our crops, we used to sell them in the market, in Wheat Bank and as well in Zwanem Market. So now, not only that we have a skill of farming to which we obtain it while growing up, we also undergo some skills, some courses. So we are qualified to do farming, although we are facing a struggle to which our farming rights have been deprived from us because we are land tenures. 2012, our case was submitted to Rural Development and Land Reform, although till this point, there are no resolutions or we are still facing the similar struggle to which we realize that our rights have been breached over there. So now, in my mind, I'm just thinking, if we are coming with a new bill, how is it going to be implemented? What are the measures or strategies that we are coming along with so that we also be assisted? Looking at the factors that even though they've realized that our rights have been breached, but till this point, it's been years and years, nothing has been done. So I need to know the implementation strategy in regards of this new bill, because the way it is presented, we feel that it could bring much change, especially in protecting farming rights and encouraging the long-term farming in the land. I called from Aron Gwai when he's saying the government coming with proposals that they are failing to implement. It's crippling the community or the nation. So now, I wish to know, in this bill, how are farm dwellers going to benefit or going to be protected as it reflects on protecting the land? What about us? The land that I'm residing in, it's owned by an owner who has more than four farms, to which we are just requesting one of that farm to utilize in agriculture, to which we have a comprehensive business plan. And we also have consulted with the market, the abattoir, to which they wish to sell or to get the product from us, to which it reflects as a long-term... I mean to say, a long-term food security, to which they are going to buy the chicken from us in large quantity, although apparently nothing is done because the farm owner doesn't utilize the land and he doesn't want us to use it. And apparently, again, second thing, at this point, as I'm speaking. As I was saying, that we have identified the market to which is an abattoir. It could sell a large... he could buy from us a large quantity of chickens.
Yes, thank you. Can you conclude?
Okay. So now, another... okay, the inputs that I wish to bring. It's that if you could look on how will this bill cover the farm dwellers? Farm dwellers or tenants to which they are facing a challenge of being deprived of utilizing the land for farming activity, to which the land is not even used at all.
All right. Thank you. Can we have another speaker, please? Yes, thank you. You can make a written submission. Thank you. Let's pay in mind that you are speaking four minutes, and the interpreter is speaking four minutes. That's eight minutes. And she's been speaking for 10 minutes already, so let's keep to time, please. We have everyone in the hall must get an opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Greetings in the afternoon. I am Constance Kabeni from S Tolen, WAT 105. I have a request about my company. I deal with chickens, food with chickens. I deal with chicken feeds. And I also keep chickens. The problem I have... I do not have a chicken. I don't have proper machines to manufacture these chicken feeds, but I do do something for these, for my chickens, but I don't have proper machinery to do it.
But today, when you go there using public transport and you say that you are going to a light at Lalahadi's place, you would find that that place that I used to operate in is now occupied by a foreigner, a Somali or whoever. Now, the point I'm trying to drive home is that the place that I used to operate in, I was actually removed there by the government and they have now put in someone. Hence, I am saying that it is difficult to find a place. You'll forgive me, but at this moment, I want to show you a little example. The new place that I was put in is very small. This hall is very big compared to it. Now, what I'm showing here on my phone is my company. I produce eggs in Kalinen. But I am staying with this chicken in my yard with the children. My place is very small. And I do not want to operate alone. So I am pleading with you to provide assistance because there are other people who have gone beyond the age of fifty-five like myself. When there are job opportunities, because of our old age, we are no longer considered. Now, I want to work with others. I would like women and men to come and work with me so that we can get a bigger area. I also have skill in growing chicken.
What? Seli Super Chick.
I used to be a supervisor at Seli Super Chick. That is where I got the skill. I am very much skilled in growing chicken. I was later promoted and I started working in the abattoir. That is where I got the skill in making any product that has to do with chicken. Speaking right here, I'm very confident of my skill. I also have skills in cultivation. I do not want to take much of your time. If time permitted, I would show you where I have done my cultivation. Now, what pained me a lot was that at the time when I was moved from the area that I was operating in, I had seven vehicles. I also have had shelves that I use inside the shop. I also had big refrigerators that had double doors. Okay. Now, at this moment, all my cars, their refrigerators and the chicken are now in one place. I do not have space for children to play. So now I am pleading with you because in Kalinen Region Five, there are farms that it is alleged that they belong to the government. So I would like you to provide us with information so that we can know as to how we are going to occupy those farms. As I said that I do not want to take much of your time. I thank you.
San Bonan.
Greetings. My name is Duduzi Sevilla. I stay in Ward 102 at Zitobeni. I'm grateful for the opportunity that you have given me so that I can come before you and say the few words that I have with regard to the problems that I have and also those that relate to farming.
During three years ago, people were taken to another place where it was felt that it's suitable for them to reside. Where they were removed, they had to dump that place with all the debris. I had to take that dumping place where they dumped the debris and used it, cultivated it, and I wanted it to be registered in my name so that I own it officially and legally. Okay. In the beginning of this year, I had to bring the samples of my vegetables, told them that this is what I'm doing and I wanted to get the proper papers for this because I don't have the title deed. I had to go to all these offices but not single office that assisted me by directing me to the proper office that will help me, the relevant one. So for now, I'm afraid to continue cultivating my vegetables because I'm afraid they will come and say, "Stop it because this is not your place." And the other thing that worries me is that you are no longer employable because you are over thirty-five years of age. I just want to know how can we solve this problem. Thank you.
Greetings. I greet the entire parliament. My name is Alfred McCesar. Alfios. Alfios McCesar. I will start by apologizing because it may sound a bit awkward. I can state that this bill, we as the people from the farms, it may not be helpful to us. Because I reside on a farm and the place I'm residing in is owned by a white man. But because I know what I want, I just continue to farm in that land. When I heard that there's a bill that we are supposed to be allocated some land, I was happy, but again considering that I'm under a white man's supervision. There's another place that was being occupied by my other family members. Now that place is a graveyard. I want to claim that place, but they say I cannot because I do not have papers. I do understand the matter of being allocated some portion of the land, but how does that affect us as the farm dwellers? Because we are ruled or we are staying, we are residing under another person's supervision. As we speak, if you want to go and seek for some land to farm, they tell you you need to have title deed. It's very painful to be a dweller of the farm because these kind of matters are being spoken about, but you hardly reach them. Where I reside, under that white man's supervision, I have livestock and I am farming there. I really wish to have my own place that will be under my name because one day he approached me and told me he want to sell that place. So he promised to sell the place and offer me a million rand so that I can relocate to stay in Zitobeni. But I requested him to go to Zitobeni and find the place that is exactly the same as that one, closer to the road and closer to the grazing land where my livestock can graze and closer to the river for it to drink water. As a young farmer, I wish to have or possess my own land where I can farm peacefully. Because as we speak, I do, I did farm some maize meal there, but people are now harvesting. Only to find out they are harvesting with hands, they do not have proper equipment to do the harvesting. Another sad story is that this program or this bill is going to give us the land, but it does not provide us with the proper equipment. We humbly request that this land claim be canceled because it takes long to be processed. There's a plenty of land there in the farms. We want to use the land, but before we can utilize that land, we are told that we must go and reclaim that land first. Thank you very much. Greetings, everyone. My name is Golden Mtswini. I'm residing in Ward 103 Ekangala. I do see the bill and I accept it only if it is going to be helpful to us. I have some complaints and I also have some few requests. There in Ekangala, we have a large barn where our great-grandfathers and grandfathers used to utilize that barn since nineteen? Eighty-eight. Eighty-eight. And so our grandfather's purpose to have livestock there was not there to be rich or to be, to have plenty of money. They possessed some cows and goats that was utilized for cultural ceremonies when we are raising children. The grandfathers happened to pass on and then we were only left with grandmothers and the nieces and the nephews there to take over. Yeah, so guunzi maglesa swa, inkomozi ni ngenzekas fige la go two hundred, two hundred and something or close to three hundred. So the difficulty we are having currently with that barn, we have overcrowded of cows and goats that are in one barn. And then Chief Matthews Mahlangu gave us this land before he passed away. So this land belongs to us. And then it happened to have a squatter camp around that place. So we were forced to relocate from that particular area that was the possession of our great-grandfathers. We relocated closer to a new developing sewage there in Ekangala. We are residing very well there. So we are residing very well there, but we have some challenges because the lack of services. For example, we need to buy some barley for the livestock, but it's difficult to go to a particular old person and ask him to take out thousand rand to buy that particular food services. So my request is that if there is a particular department where I can put a request, I would love to have that information so that we can request those services and then we can also have some fencing so that the community that is residing there can continue its culture as usual. And lastly, I will conclude by mentioning that I have three children. They are currently farming. They have been raising some spinach crops and carrot crops, but they are lacking information. Others are in great turn, others have completed their matrix. So my request to the department is that to avoid having our children to be in drugs and narcotics, is that maybe to utilize Saturdays and Sundays, like mainly the weekends, to give them the knowledge as to how to continue this farming career. Thank you.
San Bonan.
Greetings. My name is Amos Mahlangu. I am standing before you here as a messenger because I heard that there's a meeting, there was going to be a meeting here. I'm residing with my grandmother, so I told my grandmother that I'm going to Broncos Strait. I'm currently staying in Wassokulumi, so I am here as a messenger. My, I told my grandmother I'm going there because she has a place here in Broncos Strait, but that particular place of hers was being claimed by another person. You will bear with me. I'm terrified and a bit afraid, nervous because I'm not used to public platform like this. Let me start from the beginning. I used to have an uncle back in the days. So my uncle did claim that land at then, but nothing happened because we who are residing there in Sokulumi, we are residing under the relationship of the king. After claiming that land, my uncle passed on in two thousand and seventeen. So I'm only left with aunts and my aunts are refusing to participate on such matters because they are afraid that there's some chaos that are happening with regards to their land claims and other stuff related to that. Yes, so me being interested on such matters back then, I was still young in twenty seventeen, I was at school. So my grandmother was afraid of giving me some papers because of my age back then. And there was a construction of the RDP houses in that particular area. And there was a potion that solidly belonged to us under my uncle since back then, he was the one who claimed the land. So now that I have completed school, I continue to participate and to carry on this matter. So after hearing that this land was approved for the building of those RDP houses, I wanted to intervene there, so I requested the papers from my grandmother so that I can continue this thing where my uncle left off. Because my aunts, they are afraid of dying and other stuff like that, but I'm willing to die if that's possible as long as I know we are going to be doing the right thing with regards to possessing our land back. So my request with regard to this bill is that if it is possible for it to help me because I see that my grandmother is now in his last days of living. Anything can happen anytime, so I'll be left alone. So my request and my hope is that this bill can be of assistance to me. Thank you.
Now, let us thank the input of this second session. About Mahlangu's nervousness and all the eyes looking at him reminds me of my young tender age. At the age of fourteen years, I had to address the European Parliament in Strasbourg, receiving an award on behalf of my grandfather. So I was also shaking and very stressed like Obama Mahlangu. But we got through that. And I hope by coming through this session, you'll be able to fulfill the dreams of your grandmother and your uncle. We will now take another. We will now take another round of hands. I did note that there were still three hands from this side at the back. I noted the hand of the gentleman at the back. And that was the other hand gentleman with the cap. There was a third hand there at the back. I'm certain it wasn't you with the glasses. So if you insist it was you, then please come forward because I don't see any other hand at the back. So that was the round I took from this side. I'm returning now to my right hand side to take the last round of hands on this side. On this side. Still gonna go to that side for the last round if there's any other hands. I'm always biased to young people and women in particular. So there's a young lady at the back there with the white top, please come forward. Any other hands on this side? There's a young lady at the back raising her hand, please come forward. There's a gentleman here with the blue jacket. There's a gentleman there with the glasses. Yes, I was pointing the one behind you, but you can also follow him. Councillor Duploy, I see you're raising your hands. Oh, it was for him, that's fine. Any other hands on this side? I take it that there's no hands and therefore we are closing this session on this side if there's no other hands. I still have two more chairs remaining, so the other hands on this side. A gentleman at the back. And this gentleman, yeah, the elder. Now, don't look behind you. Any other speakers on this side? Is that the last hand? One and two, any other hand? See, only two hands. Is there any other person who may wish to speak either than these two hands? When we are in an auction, they say going once. Someone spoke about being a fundees. So we say going twice. When you're selling your livestock, then they say going thrice. So these are our last two speakers we have. So as the speakers go forward, please note that gentleman and this one sitting in the front. I take it then that this is our last group of speakers who will be making their submissions. Okay, can we settle down and be as silent as we can? And give respect to our last speakers. You may go ahead, thank you.
Thanks a lot for, to be afforded this opportunity to talk here. But firstly, I would like to recognize the two chiefs or kings in our vicinity. King Mkambi, the second of Mahlaangus of Wassokulumi? King Mandla Mandela of Mvesso in Istenkeep? In Mvesso. Eveso? Okay. No, I totally disagree or not supporting this bill just because... Oh, sorry. My name is Mkhulu Mahla from Wassokulumi. Okay. I totally disagree or not supporting this bill based on the following. I think it is premature for us to talk about this bill now. Because there is still a bill that needs to be resolved, the section twenty-five of expropriation of land without compensation. Sitting there at my chair, listening to most of the speakers who are here. Those people, they are not talking about this bill, but they are talking about the expropriation of land. Because that bill unlocked most of the things that we are talking about. Because when we'll be talking about protecting this bill that we've gathered here for it today, it will be simple because we'll be know who are talking to. Because the most vulnerable people in this country are the kings. The kings are the custodians of the land, but they don't have the title deed to show you, to show for it. Just to make a classic example. I'm a resident of Wassokulumi. Wassokulumi is a place, it doesn't even have a complex because the investors, they can't come and build it because we don't have a title deed. So by saying that, that is why I'm saying we must first resolve the section twenty-five of expropriation of land before we can come and talk about this bill. Because this bill is favoring the minority, the people that are having land that is big, are the minority people. Currently, as I'm speaking, there are two mining, there are two mines around the Bronkos Strait. And those two mines are operating on an agricultural land where the dance of maize was produced. But if we can have passed the expropriation of land, we'll be know who are talking to and we'll classify these lands in the right categories to know where to mine and where to do agriculture. Lastly, yes, I go down. I would like our parliament in every aspect and in every time when they are talking. They must not take advantage of illiterate of our forefathers and our grandfathers. Because they are now confused about this bill. Because they are still waiting to resolve the expropriation of land, but when we are feeding them again with this agricultural land bill, then they are becoming confused. And the kings are the ones who can help the government to protect the land by giving them the title deeds. Lastly, let's do first thing first, let's not chum the gun, please.
San bonan, san bonan, no keba tu base Bronkos Strait.
Good afternoon to everybody from Bronkos Strait. I am Ron...
Remstende.
Remstende, from Bushbacrich. I'm from Greenvale, Economy. We were farmers as we grew up at home. I studied agriculture, economics and business economics. I've been working within the community producing food.
Under Russell Stone.
Under Russell Stone.
Stone protein.
Stone protein. If you know of the fish oil from Russell Stone. I'm telling and pleading with the government that we grow some vegetables, we plow something, cultivate. We try cultivating some vegetables for the community freely. And we operate as NPOs, non-profit organizations. We are working for other people free of charge. It's hurting us. I support the government or the president when he says we must cultivate or grow some vegetables and doing things like fish oil, also growing...
Medication.
In Tangu, marijuana for medication, so I support him. He must be aware that we are aware about the... We are aware about his position as the president of the country. We support him, but he must be aware that we are aware about his position as the president. They must close the mines so that we cultivate something on those land that there are mines underneath. So they must close them so that we cultivate anything that will help the community. Even if you close this mine, you grow something, it's going to grow on that land. Can you conclude, please? We know agriculture. I salute my councillor, Mr. Piri. He called the meeting last week. He brought the mine. Emkos. Thank you. They must close the mines and grow the vegetables. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Piri. You may proceed, Tad.
Afternoon, everyone. My name is Tofa Tofa Mosala. I stay here in Bronkos Strait. Yeah, I'd like to thank the government for giving us the opportunity to come and engage with them. engage with them.
Ngibawa oktogozza ukhulumende, luguti asningale etu ba luguti si zogwazi na tukpase la.
But one thing that I want to acknowledge is the fact that we are a balkanish.
Yasi, indayenza luguti si nitogozi luguti.
And the other thing that I'm questioning myself regarding this bill is whose land are we protecting?
Yasi, umbuzo engisboza wana, ngi ngomteto mlingwalu, luguti gushe gushe si vigela indawo kabana.
If it's a known fact that agricultural land is owned, and an apologetic, so that is owned by white people, whose land are we protecting? Is this bill at the end of the day saying to black people, hands of my land?
Eh, nangesi kuluma gushe indawezne ngisi petwen ngapamsho, pingakha ni umteto mlingwalu, ucho luguti ksekelawa bona na luguti ni na gushe gushe gueyela name.
Because I mean the kind of our people, even from the speaker that spoke before me.
Yasi, iinengi lavanda ba kulumela, ngisho no, lokwata tu kuluma ngapamgo luguti ngigale etu ba.
People they want land.
Abantu ba funa indawo.
Our historic background, we are moving from being employee to be employers, we want to be farmers.
Yasi, gushe gushe aasfuni uksuka, aasfunu klala seba sebin, natisi funa goba balimi ngogwe etu.
Because my profession I'm a geologist, and I'm engaged with a lot of farmers, and even when you go to an area where you have a prospecting right or a prospecting permit, the first thing that you get from them is the arrogance that this is my land and there's nothing you can do.
Yasi, ngis, ginekonu iltila kobeku tungsebe zela netuze nabana, gotoa na nasenawe nesxuka xuke ne ukhulukulu laba mbafuna konisiz, na ufika wakchelu kut, le indawo ya, agnalito ozolens.
So if this bill is passed, how is mining going to work side by side with agriculture and arrogant white farmers?
Ngibawa ubuzo luguti nangwe umteto mlingwalu upasi swa, uzo ksebe zisa nanjani nemaini, namka nabamsho baba pete indawo.
So after reading this bill, I tend to feel that as government we are being too excited.
Yasi, ngemvago kunda umteto mlingwalu, ngiboni luguti simbozo namka si ukhulumende, si kichimele pambi.
There are still issues that need to be addressed, land redistribution.
Gusese neminye imteto, namka eznye zindo, exafuze zi lungiswe kangi.
So if you have been told that the government owns less than twenty percent, so as government, whose land are you protecting?
Gushe gushe na uzawa luguti ukhulumende, uune twenty percent, oye pete, gushe gushe si zela ngoma na si sekela indawo kabana.
So if the intention of the bill is to say, let's identify agricultural land and that land, let's redistribute it to people who need and will use that land productively so, then I'll support the bill, but as it stands, I don't support the bill.
Ya bona nangektiwa umteto mlingwalu, uti, ti nasen ukhulumende, si zoka na indawo eztila we ezngase jenziswa balii, besesiztha te indawezo, sizbisilempagati, katano uchonjalo, mina benzo sekelu umteto mlingwalu.
So my plea to the government is, our people have cried, you've hurt them, let's not address the issues of the people.
Minna isbao engna swa ukhulumende, ngisuguti si uzuelumpagatukulumi, ngibawa keslinge uglungisa namka, silinge uglungisa loko umpagati oli langa, ngiatogaos.
Eh, greetings.
Lo chamengapamwe nyungu Andyle wakandala.
My name is Andylen Dala.
Ngichala ka Olifiri, mina inginga enpe espekenenayo, ingingama tuna.
I am residing at Olifiri and our problem currently is with regards to the graveyard.
Ikua lele sakegilo, alfunu kutisambeni so kula ngali, matunen so tina osopala.
The white man we are residing under his supervision, he does not want us to go and clean up that graveyard and to do some ceremony, cultural ceremonies.
Manumele sambeso pala, umelekiliwe silwenalo, oh, last week, besambiles funyo pala, ba decideza luguti abin sama security, utayo skata, esiflek, so, so fika, simoshia izindo zakila pre, and si funu clean up pela sipasi.
Eh, when we want to do our cultural ceremonies, we always have quarrels with the white man there, because he does not want us to perform our rituals there, so last week alone, we went there to clean up and he called us some securities to prohibit us from performing our rituals and cultural ceremonies, so we really want assistance with regards to that.
Minna, abanpinbase parliament benzke la luguti bassisa, luguti masfunu kina matuna, unabinengi inga.
So my request from the parliament individuals is that if they can assist us, that if we want to go and clean that graveyard, there should not be a problem.
Manumele so kina matuna, agafuna bandavanengi, ufuna tri abantu, and umele sambeso ngesi family to tina, sokuluma ingingaze chudema tuna, ye nagafun.
When we want to clean the site there on the graveyard, he only allows three people to be there, and our request is that we want to be there as a family and to clean up and to also report our problems to our ancestors.
Ya bona nguzobuela pant.
Thank you. I would like to greet everyone.
Ngilochi se omsonisho Mandela, ngoketegile.
I greet.
Ndabezita, ne shavasokas ngapagati eh olue.
I greet Honorable Mandela, in particular, and Ndabezita, and the entire community in our midst.
Ngichampamwe nu William Caesar.
My name is William Caesar.
Ngivelaa eplasini ebizawuti ipoki farm, Epps Fontaine.
I am from the farm by the name of Poki Farm in Papps Fontaine.
Umteto mlingwa, siyautowo zamsonisho Mandela.
We appreciate this bill, Mister Honorable Mandela.
Marago oke loko okpalue la apabu chapter two, O F, Roman figure one and two, ayenzeki yokelendo leo under rural development.
But everything that is written in chapter two under Roman figure two F, everything that is written there does not occur in the place we are residing.
Izwile inkulume ezkulume lamsonishwa, balila ngamaplasi asapetwema okuwa.
I have been listening to the presenting speakers, all of them are complaining about the farms that are still under the ownership of the white man.
Manje tina ePoki Farm si xukumezoa eh rural development, eplasini epetwen kiibo.
The problem we are having in Poki Farm is the rural development that is under their supervision.
Ikua latinalchata eplasi linigela eh rural development.
When the white man took over on the land to present it or to offer it to the rural development.
Latipamwe rural development inkumbula gushe, eh project manager beongusambo, wati abantu laba yokel eh project ezoba kona, mele babae ipaten pasilia loko abazo wenzala abu.
When he presented this farm to the rural development, he pleaded with Mister Sambo, who was then in charge, that everyone who will be under this land must have part in participating.
Maraku te ukamba weskati eh rural development ya faga bakoz baabo, luguti abo mabi tbebatocha emaplotini bakamba three kilometers, eh rural development laba koz baabo bazvala zo kinlela, abo kokonabu bamkulu, se bakamba ten kilometers giyama tochwenu abo.
So when this took place, our parents used to work there, they used to travel like three kilometers to work there, but the rural development now confiscated that right from them and given to their acquaintances and friends, so that now the problem we are facing is that our parents and great parents are now having to walk or travel long distance for them to have sustenance.
Ngoba labo wandababa fagela apo, bati ma beneficiary we eplasi, ba vali zinlela, bati eplasi ngiyabo, manje minamsonishwa, gibso ngoba, eplasi epetwe eh government umteto mlingwa, manje bazopractisa njani, ba feela indo esesanjenzabo.
So the problem we are having with regard to this is that the people who are possessing the land, they are sticking and saying that they are the beneficiaries or the rightful owners of it, so now how is this bill going to address such matters?
Izwile omsonisho Mandela, atu omama Oreshel Masango okona, si le office in lake, wasningala five minutes, was gosha, sae office in lenechinali, under o advocate mgwengo weze eplasini, marasetili, sitetwe, sadreteno ngamafunu, sasa sakitnejoa, ba logoba kona spa reportera, aguko wenzarele, eplasi maraisesanjenzabo.
We heard Honorable Mandela that Honorable Rachel is also here, we did went to.
To her.
To her, to her office to address this matter, nothing has been done, and we went to other departments that are related, we even underwent, we were kidnapped at one point with regards to what we are fighting for.
Because sache elo sachi, indo enienza onizo ikhona na.
Because they threatened us that, are you going to finish what you have started?
Manje omsonishwa mina, indwen ngitele gue, stela ukhulumene na eh rural development, luguti nama beneficiary eti bona, ibebeke laapa, maya scharchabasi sima koto, u twenty twenty one oke, twenty twenty two oke, beskamba eh court, ngoba eh rural development itenay fika, ya subdivider eplasi le into triple sheen.
So my request to you, Honorable Mandela, is that if you can address those who are in charge, because they are taking us to courts and there are quarrels between us and them, so we all want to be clear as to how are we going to take part as well in that particular farm, because we also have a share.
Namshangi ngibele etu ufika la omsonishwa, eh sheriff bezi le kuti today, ngawala ma illegal beneficiary wabo eh rural development, bati ngendu twenty nine, oke umundi olapaklea eplasi ufuneka eh high court eh joanispe, ngoba usala ngungamte eto labu.
I'm late, I arrived late here today because I was with the sheriff who said on the twenty nine.
Of August.
Of August, everyone who is residing in that place is needed to appear in court with regarding to the proceedings of this matter.
Manje ke, ngiebezwa banu bayalila eplasi ngesa makoa, unangani tina, eschala eplasini esesanjenzeka government, si xukunezwe ngibo, ama project managers na bafika, bascheli meshwini, bati sikatelo luguti sngapala, sipalole kobereka, ngangalina yenu, luguti nibela, masfika tina, si zonisusa, si nise edgadwa se Daviton.
So I do hear the outcry of the people who are currently in that particular place, because that place is being, is under the supervision of the white man as we speak, and so people are unable to do the things that they intend to do in those farms. As we speak, they also threaten to take us out of that farm and to move us away to Daviton.
Omsonishwa, asinayo imalia makweta, ogutaschamele, ende asinalo ulwazi luguti eh rural development, saza lela la pe eplasini, luguti bangakonsaltangananaati oraboba babetu, luguti eplasi izonigela abandava itri, oye wanuvele Witbanki, oye wanbavele Tembisa, omunye uvele Pituri, manje aasikalu sizo ngoba, lendo eschamele nenayo, besitigusoba lula, luguti eplasi esesanjenzeka government, mara, unangani tina, eplasi esesanjenzabo swakaga.
So I want to plead with the government now that it must intervene, because this apportioning of the land, it was allocated to one individual in Witbank and another in Tembisa, and we also want to know what the rural development is doing in order to assist us with this wide supervision of that farm.
Ngingabimute, ikaimbu elfike namshangi ekaya lisbita nguti omushito Oti eh cooperative, basho bona babegwe eh rural development, bani thirty years lease, nanga ave ngendu twenty nine saka akas asize koto, ikona inlela esuzu puma ngayo laapa, umteto loyo ba unigale eh rural development.
So currently, they saying there's a group or a forum that is mushito.
Mushito Oti Cooperative.
Mushito Oti Cooperative that is being appointed by the rural development to force that particular, those individuals that are residing in the farm to appear in court on the twenty ninth of August. Should they fail to do so, they will take matters in their own hands.
Omsonishwa ngiatogaosa, ngitogaosa luguti skonilo, luguti sebetuze wako, isalwazi azazla fanekezchinga kona, abo mama bitu bebati, na batke tukuvuna umbila, bayo topa ama kope ogubasa, bakichiniswa ngiveni, evilaba be mushito omuti abafa eh rural development laapa, nobaba ba tu puta, eh ngikota go, omsonishwa, I'm sorry, unenju ye kuwa laapa, a very big house, ebiz about four million, ikua lati lenjuleya, abantu na abetu, mele ba esbe zisa es icrash, ngoba si twenty one kilometer away from eh Daviton, ye naloba ba lo puta, uyte te yokelentwi kakile, wa ilasha ngamalori, ama blanca, nama zenke, wa isagandebe.
So I thank you, Honorable, for being here before us so that we can tell you our outcry, because now there's a lot we are facing, for example, there, the mushito, there was a house that was being sold for four million, but that house, it was given to us for our children as an inheritance, to be used as a crutch, but now they are intending to sell that house and confiscating it out of our own hands, so we are asking the government to intervene in this matter so that this can be resolved properly.
No, I would say it's hard, I'm cool. Uyakakile, wa kipama zenke, wa kipiminyango, wa kipana ma festere, ya chali emti, ngitogaosa.
They dismantled this house completely and took everything that is the building material of the house, so we just need help on that matter, thank you.
Ya bona omsonishwa.
Good afternoon.
Bingalela onkumuntu, ngeshalo ngeshalo, lomela ustrike wakan tudi.
I greet everybody, protocol observed.
Ngumuntu muisha, usala eh one o two.
I'm a young person, a youth who stays in.
One o two.
One o two, what one o two?
Yes, ma'am. Eh, ngiwena abanengkinga kakulu, ngiezoglima, aliki ofisengala hamdi.
I have a problem concerning agriculture, I've consulted all the offices.
Eh, inginga, inginga abana yo kakulu indawo.
My main problem is the land.
Eh, wenda o, eh kakulugazi lastala kona eh prongo sprit, sinengkinga yama official akanga ngali indawo se agriculture.
In Bronco Sprit where we reside, we have a problem of the officials who are very corrupt.
Eh, sinindawo ezni, the agriculture is corner from reaching seven, is under umaspa.
There is agricultural land in different parts of the area.
Ezinyeza kona si vandalize we.
Other places are vandalized.
Ezinyeza kona si akala u vandalize. Esinyezakona si akala u vandalizwa gu manje.
In other areas, they are just starting to vandalize those places.
Eh iskalo sami mina kakulu eh ngumuntu musha eh tinasi abantu abasha kakulu gazi swela etaga mizwini eh joali ini so besiskipa pisi kakulu ngi agriculture kuti sichale sugazutu sithenge se gona luge sikhala yo samiswa.
Our complaint is the fact that as young people or as youth, we've been keeping ourselves busy by doing something in agricultural sector but now we don't have anything to do.
Yes, samiswa abantu we agriculture kuti last tata kona amanzi eh begu plasti we indao ye mine so aswazu tata amanzi masutlamanza ayuchekwa and then ndao last limela kona ayipilongi ti isapilonga emlungu.
We were stopped to continue doing agricultural activities there and the problem was water because there was a mine around and the water, we're not allowed to fetch this water. They were blasting the mine in the area.
So mina benguele lomtechoa manje ofigile u guti ungenelele kakulu gule indavo esu sema plasin kakulu ngoba ema plasin gula gune indao kona esangese benzela kona ngoba indao esvule gile indao esirai inkina manje esinayo aban official lawa gumele kuti asinetela ma office a kona esiyagiwa abantabanga nanthabanabantabasha kutbenzana.
We just need some assistance because we need to do something in our area but the officials that are corrupt are unable to help us to go forward with what we want to do.
And eh gua manje ewanucho sinindao eh ya educator kuti indao ya agriculture i i ralaway line le ralaway line chilchudi bafuna kutikubuyele imiku ku giyo masiya we apply asenga abantabasha no one will respond out.
There is a place near the railway line which we need to use or utilize but we are unable to do that.
So beskele lomtecho o kona ofigile su sapota osu eh balali base region seven u kuti ungenelele kakulu u gunseta kutisto lea indao zoksebenzela.
If this bill can help us in allowing us to be able to do agricultural activities in the area, that is what we request from the of the parliament.
Ngatendu kubao.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, the chairperson.
Ki bawo gundlochi sano ke namsonishwa.
Honorable Manda Mandela.
Umsonishwa u Manda Mandela.
The representative of other political parties here in the south.
Na abacha mili bezinye insanga no abakona naatila.
The leaders of different NPOs.
Na batu sipambi libensanga no sluga sluga nego zama PO.
The leader of the tribal of eh So Kulumi.
Ki na batu sipambi namkamakosi we we mbuso okusokulumi.
The leaders in the department of rural development agriculture.
Na batu sipambi libokutugiswa wenda o ze makaya namasigo.
All protocol observed.
Si giboboke abakona abacha mili ba.
We we are standing here before you. My name is Mr. Chuanis Nkiti Mukwena.
O chamepambi gue nulo ngime u Chuanis Mukwena.
I am the leader of the organization called Watts Forum.
Kimto sipambi liwe shanga no ibiza u guti i Watts Forum.
It is an organization that has been established to protect the interest and rights of the workers.
I shanga no eyaso nyuan namkayacha ni so u guti izokvigela ama lungelo abasebe.
Occupiers.
Abandiga sbenda o.
Labor tenants.
Abantu abakwa chilego.
Farm dwellers.
Na bandu abasalema plasini namka i abanzinindawenzema ka.
We are operating in all eh provinces.
Nasinje si sebenza gezozoke imfu.
Most of the people who are gathered here, we know them, we know their problems.
I ine ngilabando esna bo la namshanji siabazi beko tusiyayazi nemraro abakalele na.
We have attended some of the parliamentary eh public participation like during the section twenty five process.
Selle guni minye imshanga no eh esikesa ekambeela shanga nise naloo u gu nganyet twenty five yeshelo.
The bill six.
Umteto mlingwa number six.
And then we have previously two months, three months back attended another parliamentary participation in Emparas Palace, Palace.
Enyang.
Emparas, in Emparas Palace, same in airport, I'm sorry. Emparas Palace, yes.
Enyangeni esimbalo enda tusikesa kambeela kutu neyenyi i shanga namka umshanga no olap eh Emparas Palace, Emparas Palace.
Yes, I'm sorry. Now, the intention of all this public participation, we have we have seen that is good intention.
Sitenasala u guti guseguseyi ni isoso ye shanga nuli sabona u guti isoso ayo mishe kulu.
The previous one at Emparas Palace, we recall the chairperson sitting before us, honorable Manda Mandela, was leading it. He was somewhere northwest.
Eh shanga nui ni eh sabana u gskateslulilego degu nomsonishwa.
During that time of that particular participation and process is where we have put more complaint.
Eh shanga nui ni loyo gulapo safesa kona ingongo ilose tu esni.
Most of the complaints is consolidated from all these people who have laid the complaint to us that we have walked and driven to their places and listened to them and make sure that we address them.
Esinyezengongo ilo esisvezile u umpakati sela uzvezile namshanji oggi tesayagiwo sakulumsanana oba vazingongo ilose tugi naati sasa tata saslu senapambilindawene.
What we were promised by the leadership who were leading that processes was that there will be some answers that will be given to this community because they were also here in Bronco Sprites.
Esaa tengisaa tengiswa kona umshanga nui ndo namketskateslulule u guti sizo kufuma na imbendulu ez izoktatoa zisiwe umpakati naabanya bawa njowa bakwana pe Bronco Sprite.
I stand to be corrected. Up to today, we have never received those replies.
Gotuana ngiglungele u guti ngilungi sinange ngenza umcha eh ngwazi u guti bekuwe namshanji askagas kufuma nimbendu.
I am quite hundred percent sure that even the people who are representing here because of lack of resources, TVs and all these other eh thing to can bring information to them, they have never received it.
Ki bawa u guchono u guti ngia kenseka u guti na bandu esna bo la ngichonanyana msambe bangana zinsechinsesilego zokufuma na imlayes abaga kufuma ni imbendu.
That is the reason that most of our people and us came before this important gathering. We tend to bring in complaints.
Guengebangelun esbona sishange nela u guti esizo kveza ingongo i.
So the main purpose of this gathering is to deal with this eh public participation on this bill.
Guseguseyi isoso u guti shanga nela namshanji kukulumisana ngomteto mlingwa namkamapusu agumteto mlingwalu o kona la.
Unfortunately, we as an organization, we have received the information at the early hours yesterday.
Ya zi okzisauksungu u guti tinasi shanga no sifume ne imninigwanalu imninigwanale i isolo eksei.
I'm not sure if I'm I'm wrong. Our general secretary is also a councillor here in this region, region seven, councillor Mapena. I'm hundred percent that he also did not receive this information.
Angazi noko gotuana gi nestenseka sokuti no councillor yetu u Mapena. Na igenzeka agakao kufuma umteto mlingwalu.
But we have a corporation eh working together with rural development. They are the ones who have in in eh what's called invite us in the previous parliamentary processes but with this one they haven't eh eh invite us. I don't know what is the problem.
Si ya zugu ti sisebenzana kshekulu ne nomnia ngo otokomela zenda gotuana bebasalebas negela imninigwaneksesenga pambi gotuana loha namshanji akangesu kufuma ngenge telefana angazi msambe gukubeno umchapotilego na.
We want to participate in this process and then we want to now reserve our right of eh saying we are supporting or not supporting due to the reasons that we have never gone through to every page here.
Ya zi siyafuno kulumisana guse si veza mapusu ngomteto mlingwalu gotuana nganjenga ngaje kuti sigi ti u gucho u guti siyawamgeela namka awangoba na akangesu kufuma nitube lanalego lukalisis.
We have seen most of our eh people that we are leading and the leaders were here and then some of them did not support, some have supported. That is not our position. We are the organization and then we need to consult with them and then so that we can advise and then get advice from them and then come up with one eh solution.
Tina si shanga solo giselulilto milisiboni legune ukulumisese langa pambi lisabezwa abanya bati bayauzegele umteto mlingwalu abanya bacho bati abauzegele gotuana layo aksi nganyeyetu tina tina jengoba na si shanga umsebenzit u guti tinanene scharba si kulumisana na sibene liswili nye esisoltat sili sipambi.
With few minutes that we have checked this document, we have seen lot of facts around all the chapters and then we have seen that the intention is good.
Si beneskateslulaza nanokonjengoba na shtule sokkalisisa umteto mlingwalu sabona nama pusu ama alavesi weke ekasine lenyelena sabona u kutguseguseyi isoso yo na yese.
We were covered by some of the speakers eh that have spoken about the preservation of the agricultural land and then eh we we they have covered a most ground that we agree with them.
Eznye ingenyi silezi gu namka kukulu nyi wengaazo abezenga pambi liselebasvezile kulu kulu lezo glondo lozo wenda onjalonjalon ez nengizaazo naati siyafumela na na.
In conclusion, I want to say that eh it's a very important thing across the provinces where we are going.
Eh.
On chapter two, chapter one, section two.
Ki bawa u gucho u guti lamkalo bawa u kvezu utlokenzo petanga ako u guti nda imfu nda ez ne ngilasi slulakwa namkesis kambe lagu u chapter two u chapter one.
Is chapter two ne, part one, under the principle.
Enganyeni esbili.
Section four.
Mtechoana four.
Eh paragraph F.
Iskaba F.
Subsection one, two and three.
Inganyana one, two, no three.
Those ones, as we are going to request to make our our submission in writing, but we would like to air out these ones because it catch up in our community across the country.
Jengoba na kenasbawa ngapambili sizo kumela mezwe yetu namka ngilesi zizo angayo ngoktlola gotuana sizo bawa u kanerela kulu la eselesoa vizel ngoba na tinde imfu disne.
Thank you, thank you.
Sanbonani.
Good afternoon.
Eh mina ngungosnatsne.
I am ngosnati.
Baba Giyane from Motterfontein.
Giyane from Motterfontein.
Oh. Bengtandi leo bo ngafuti kubabo ngok abakoni u bazofigala ana nabapati betu foot.
I would like to thank everybody who is present and all the officials that are around.
Okay, jengomshali wase Motterfontein plot fifty nine.
As a resident from Motterfontein, plot forty nine, fifty nine.
Okay, bengtanda u kveza lo. Eh angazi kuti sise la maybe ugzoo ugzogwenza u guti yeshelo luthubega umteto o kona u bewa oh sise ugzoveza ama amazizo waitu umteto ozobe.
I don't know whether we have come just to observe this very bill that was existing or we are adding our ideas on top of what has been in our bill before.
Okay, mina besingpete manje u guti jenga batalbe ma plasin sibona ngati ama lungelo wetu avalelegile asnigwa nga ama lungelo anele njebasale.
As farm dwellers who realize that our rights are infringed, we are not as free as other people in their places.
So bengzo kele u guti sikfage na gomteto lo ozobe wa manje.
I would request that we add this in this new bill.
Okay, bengkele u guti kubatalbe ma plasin agube u guti mangavin sashili ngapanswa belungu anegalewa ama paperso shu u guti lanili gotuana ngakona uksebenza.
I would like to plead that as farm dwellers, even if we are dwelling in those farms, we have to get the proper papers that indicate that we are real dwellers in that area officially.
Ye ngoba guna banya u guti abantabata lesitse bakulila baniloaz u guti ama plaza sebenza kanjan and gula abo bengkele u guti njowa banga kun u guti banga palela imnyangwe chugachugene agubene njele u guti bakulumisana na abo bakonu guti na obacholi inwatizvaneresu guti bakonu ksebenza.
Because in the in the farms, there are also elderly that are residing there. They have to get those proper papers also to prove that, I guess. They have to interview them and give them proper papers to settle there.
Exactly.
Right?
Besse bengzo kele la fotogo kinasen falidisanga wemoteka kulu bengkele u guti gula ma officials abantokuwa baba spet abachele pezu les reporter ki wo masneinki ema plasin agube u guti baba gelo eskatestila so u guti bapume ngoba kubangati yu baba sfeela wabenza esintuzi tuznaha ambigal ngoba si reporter gubo mababu yakiti baschelis intuzi chugi le sometimes abasabu yaki besse strenesnasu kuti gumele soche la baba foot u gusze skonu kutisnete ngoba kusuke gui ente balulegi.
I would also request that the officials that are already the way we report, they be rotated so that they are able to help us because for now we don't get any assistance from them.
Eh mina ngatendu bo nganjowa impumelelo ekona esekasinlebi bengkele u gutu song esitatin ale ngaje entesenzala manja essebenzelen song.
Thanks a lot. I wish that this that you are bringing to us be successful. Thank you.
Amlochi senoke datamishwa emkona ni makatwali ndao.
I would like to greet all honorable members that are here in this presence.
Eh amlochi sebkosini bawa bekeitu bawa sokulumi.
I also greet the royalty of wasokulumi.
Eh amlochi sestchabi nzo ke sise la ngapakatuwa lenda o.
I also greet the community in our midst.
Eh ilingamtecho le eh ni lechilego nibe eh parlament eh ingabereka ndao nda.
This proposed bill that you brought before us as a parliament, it can work somewhere somehow.
Yes, charba faneles iyile scharba sekus.
Yes, the nation needs to eat.
Mara gunala kunye ni parlament ezanga kenshali pasini alinkambe ni emakusi umteto luangae kubereka.
But you as a parliament, unless you go and consult with the royalties and the kings, this bill will won't work.
Tina besitena si ni. Tina, vesite nasi, ni parliamente ni sa ni, tina veskavange uguchi mtsambe nindo, ugi nanu ya. Umshaboso uwele ngagi ni 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 parliamente ye ke yu, ni sosenza lulu.
We thought once the land is being placed under your care as a parliament, you will make it easier for us as the nation under your care.
Manje, ni sosenza lo ti si ni parliamente. Ee, baba Mandela na banyen timbalakwenze na lo namtsanji. Bese kavange ugi ni sosenza lume te tomlingwa, ozo amacha amakos.
But you're making it difficult, Mr. Mandela and your team who are in your midst, in our midst today. Because we thought that this bill will also accommodate the kings.
Manje amakosi, noa begi, mara amakosa kanazu.
You did appoint the kings, but the kings have no say.
Semaloki, naske semaloki, kapagatuwa lelo lokini, kulumi councillor pe.
We are on the locations, but in that location, the only person who has a say is the councillor.
Uba be tu se la kulumi, guti gunesu elinyelanga, uwe lenga pasuwe. Wa ke salfu na ugi ngapa ngogo sokulumi uwe lenga paswa.
The visitor has already spoken that there is a portion of a land that belongs under his care. But that land is not yet a portion to him.
Minan se Region Seven, ne, Eritabisi, mtsambe nengakabe, umangeleni ngu cheke ika.
I'm under Region Seven in Eritabisi, if I did not mention that and by the name, I'm Jack.
So, ma, eh, parliamente ye ke yu, ken kalisis omtechoana lo. Omtechoana lo la, ako ufaga amakosila, ubabe tuwata nganke, na na, amakosila xale maloki, awazu bere.
So I request you as a parliament that you reconsider this bill so that the kings are to be included fully in the bill so that even the kings that are residing in the locations can start to participate.
Bawa zukyo mreportela wa ye na ye na, wa zukunreporte.
So that people can report to the king and the king can report to you.
Because, njengama manje, ninanle tumte to git.
Because currently you are bringing this bill to us.
And then nanle tumte to git, emaloki la, pa ke zukona guna amakos, afane la ta tumte to, ausekosi, au bere.
And then where we have kings in locations who are responsible to take the bill to the community, that doesn't happen.
Ningze gule, ningze si zela eh, parliamente, guti mtsambe nengabe gigu umbingiti, mte toluwa au bere, ku ya bere, abantu fane lebali.
Kindly listen to me very carefully as the parliament.
Mara, si bu ebkosin beke yu, esip, esige len ngagi bo, asina lo ucho iziluzo zanga paswa abo.
But under the supervision of our kingship and royalty, there's nothing we're benefiting under that rulership.
Ni nanle tumte to, mte toluwa ukan de lela ti na be ekosi.
You are bringing the bill to us and this bill is oppressing us from the royalty.
Si zwa slile ekosi.
And the nation is crying into the royalties.
Ma e brelanem, vakeno glungis.
Kindly step back and fix some things.
Amfunu bamu te se sokulumi, lingkulumi zoke, sokulumile, ge zindo zoke, zinwa.
I won't be long. Most speakers have mentioned all the things that are happening.
Umtechoana lo, umtechoana lo, gusile muje, mara guna lakunye la, bunga impai, implai ti, bekosin abaguje.
Kindly fix this bill because I saw that this bill is good, is proper. But it does not include the kings and the royalty.
Ni togoza kulu, ken ulu mse, ninxalele pasi ulu mse, nugu.
Thank you.
Kuwele buan kosi ninxale na o pasi.
Kindly reconsider fixing this bill. Thank you.
Eh, stogoza kulu, eh, standu gluchisa wogo mundo kona ngapagati namtsanji la.
Thank you. I would like to greet everyone that is here in this meeting today.
Lo kulumo wongo wusmapena, ngapasko ekosi, bagababa osolpala, wobambi sana no baba mtweni, osomkula jan.
My name is Wusmapena, under the rulership of King Solpala and King Mtweni. Ndala somkula jan.
Eh, si velanga leenda wenyas ekana na, i informal settlement.
We are from the place called Ekana na, is the informal settlement.
Sezne miyaga ei twenty si xala kona lapa.
We have been residing in that place for over twenty years.
Eh, gunesindo eschaisana naso, ekambenu yetu nasenza ama internship, nama training, guma agriculture.
There are glitches that we are facing as we go about doing some internships with regards to agriculture.
Mas si petama qualifications asibine nda ozo, guti singa li ma, no ma mtsambe singa aka izindo zikambelana ne nama chicken houses si ukfana na lo.
Once we possess our qualifications, we have a problem of not getting the place where we can practice our career of farming and growing livestock.
So manje, ubaba bayakulumala, bati nasanga tata yitu basilbolegi sana nobkosi. Siwa zukuti izindo nasenza gago, izindo zema kosi ni, lapa natesa kulela kona sa zukuti nduiz, sizo zaraka ngapasko amakos. Azo obangi bo, abasnige la nda o.
So we support these matters that the presenting speakers have said that we need to share this leadership role with the traditional leaders. Because now if we do, if we share it properly, it will only be fair and give everybody a chance.
Ngoba na siti siya kulumo nda wenesala gi, bati nda o, ipetu makua, title deed ise makueni. Eh, uyukrupa amakua ba ibiza, guti summer trading.
Because when we are about to say something, they always tell us that the title deed is under the care or is being owned by the white people who are residing in the, in the, in that particular land.
Nasvula, amasi musitisi azama, svula, amasi mubayan genange, amasherifu, bazosu salabu, bati koi koi interdicta. Si vumele guti singenza, no ma yine nda weni esnga yoni.
When we are trying to farm, they send sheriffs to chase us away because they say we can't operate or farm on a land we do not own.
Si atogoza ngaloko, oh, gnengi si, si ya bawa, eh, umbkado slungisele, usletele netama, nza pezo, ubkosi be tu. Uze na desholu kubuega si pambi, lisese bachi.
Thank you. Our request is that we ask the government to help us, give us our power back so that we can be able to participate our right properly.
Astomen, ngoblochi saba funde si, gobtoma.
I will start greeting the pastors first.
Si beslochi si kosi.
And greet the traditional leader.
Si lochi saba party, boka wa yina bezela, baspateli omte to.
And greet all our honorens who brought this bill to us.
Eh, si gima, nze, manu, guneni kinga ngpete kaxungu, ngenza, gisela.
As I stand here, there's a particular problem that pushes me to be here.
Ee, na angaz okfaga sakulu omte to, ngoba omte tolo, mina zangenge ngayi eskulu, nangwas, nama guti, umenukti, nangaz.
And I won't say much about the bill because I'm illiterate. I don't know much as to what is the bill has to do and what does it say to me.
Ikinga yame uguchi nje, guse, gi fune ugsigi ma, gunendwenye ngiboni lelapa, bakakona i group.
What brought me forward is with regard to something I saw where they are forming a group.
Umbusolo.
Eh, this nation, this government.
Otataba nuba gruppe, ubanige zenjengamje ngomo nyanga gruppo, nenyi gruppo, ngakuropasi eight, u. Esiplaseni, nyangalega, se mbumalanga, wela ngapasko se mbumalanga.
This government is grouping us. As I speak, I'm under one of the group of eight people that is under the region of Mbumalanga.
Mungu Filimon Maslela nje, eh, ngapasko kosma Gwassokulumi.
My name is Filimon Maslela, under the traditional leadership of Gwassokulumi.
Lenda olili, waba be tati, nda olili, langa yu, gala. Ukoso bato mucho nyala, ofele, eh, Verina, under Verina.
As the visitor has already said, this traditional leadership has long been established there in that very particular place at Verina.
Sakroto mbusolo, sva ge plasing.
Government could us and positioned us in one of the farm.
Solo basfaga lapozanga sakare helepo, nalinya, nalinya.
Ever since we were being positioned there, none of the help could come our way.
Gi konge lela ngiti, i inpati kaxungu, guti umbuso ukono gukrupa wa, nuka ba itse, gudbanka, gavando abafunu bere.
That is why I have this complaint that the government is grouping people, installing them in a particular place, but it does not empower them to do jobs.
Si eight ilapa, mara ngakina ngilibange, eto iplasile, laba kapa.
They were aid of us then, but now as we speak, I'm the only one who's cultivating that farm.
Etinene, ninkinesen kichwa mblimi, silapa ti uzokina ufele nda olo, eto wena wangisa, fune lumbere, goweni nda o.
Lastly, when I was chased away by one of the person who were farming there, that if I'm continuing to do this, this will cause strain on me. And so I must just discontinue what I'm doing.
Ngoba, masi magvuno, ngibokans, labe kenge ba bere, ke babona kans, guti uvo tiwe.
Because when we are harvesting, the ones that did not do a single job there, they are the ones who are there in front for harvesting.
Gilila namtsanji, singe kambesa, ulila waru rural developments, abakase, la guti sinsa toli nda oleya, askare ise jenziso, nda oleya, spila ngowikachiisa, enabakachi bayasro, papezwa.
We sent our complaints to Rural Developments that we have not yet found the services, received the services and goods for that particular place. And we are only farming in that place, but most of the things are not under our care.
Mas kamba, siti si bawi mali, ugu teskonu bere, nda oleyana, bafuna ma title deed.
When we requesting some farms so that we can work in that particular farming area, they are requesting title deeds from us.
No, nabangige zinda o, bangaknegeli ndo zoke bereka, sasa bafuna guti batushu boku bereka, gandikenge ba negeli ndo zoke bereka.
So when they are giving you the place to work, but they do not give you the particulars or the things, the aids that will help you to work, cultivate in that area, what are they implying? Are they looking forward to when you fail to cultivate that particular area?
Kulumanje nda o, se Sparco Peace. Se bai tregese skunu, bai tregese skunu, bona wokamba, balimis, bona spakacha, balima, boga taboga matamo. Ya peli, nda oleya vitika skunu.
As we speak, the place called Sparco Peace is now completely destroyed because everyone went out, even the ones, the people who were doing the farm work there, they are nowhere to be found. We requested the keys from the Rural Development that we are pleading, this place should not die like the Fundam Lima and the other farms that were in place back then. So, but nothing is happening. We don't get any response.
No, tota, nanmtsanji, si tregese wenzala, lo naspila gibo, spachele, gutna, si tregese, bati kampa, no mangala, nama poisa la onao. Afuna i permishini, guti i pingwata ko yenda oleya.
Even today, when we go to tell the Rural Development that that place is being vandalized, they say we must lay some charges in the police regarding that particular place. But even the police, they, they are not keen, they are not so keen to take up proper steps with regard to assisting us.
Goba i contracta ya expired before Covid, bese gade ya expired maplas.
Because the contract was long expired even before Covid, when the farm's contracts was due to expire.
No, na ujamala, pananjenga, lababando, ai bega, debashala la, bati puma wokambesi, funi nda oituli.
So when you go and stand in that particular place as the person who has been long farming in that place, they request you to go out because you do not have proper papers for that particular area.
Nje, manje, si fatalele, nda oleyana, ngenda valeyo, e ma otataba, nuba fage nda oye ni ba kine. Eh, bangaga peli, lavando ababanga bereki, bo, ke plasa lko, bo, performa, totu kine, ifatalele.
So now as we speak, that place is becoming ruins because it is not operating, they are chasing people out. So the purpose of that farm is just in despair.
No, use guglungi, se kanjan, igenge njengoba ifatalele, bapkenye nama spelpente, bawa patla, bata tabate ngisa. Ena uazukchama pamwa, bogo baba khada baba kiche, mangeski ti, enano uwe no zakchama fele, lavando abogandi. Induelya, nase, uyukontra, ke si zwa, uyinkeni.
Everything is just dismantled there in that farm. And even the contractors, there's nothing they can do because that place is just in despair.
Manje, ben bawa, guti banga keke bazama, guti nabat bafunu helepa, bando ba i gruppo. Abazama, mchega, baba nenlela, bafuna ngako, guti abando abanga, be bafunu bereka, bo, kenau, mara ba gruppa peli.
So my request is that when they group people, they can, they must also assist those groups of people so that they can function properly in that particular place they are to care under.
Ye, ngoba la, baba nua ba kine, ni de wongi, baba luakamfo, bati chika, nda o, si. No, si, they don't, they're far, they're not close.
Because the people who, they, they are the ones who are chasing us. And so the problem we are having with the government is that they must be controlled in that particular area. Thank you, I appreciate if we can be assisted, that this is happening as our request. Because this is causing chaos. Thank you.
That brings us to the end of our oral submissions. As when I tried to ascertain if there were any other heads that wished to speak, we didn't see any other heads. I come therefore to be understanding that everyone that wished to speak here in these public hearings on the preservation and development of agricultural land here, from Broncos rate as an opportunity to speak and have their submission made. Therefore going to invite those charged with the responsibility of giving responses on some of the issues that you've been able to raise to do so. As we already identified in your input, that the number of submissions actually dropped away from the bill itself. And spoke to issues of service delivery and also spoke to some of the programs that are the responsibility of the Department of Agricultural Land Reform and Rural Development. So I will now take the opportunity of inviting the councillor, Dubloy, to come in front and speak to some of the issues that he was able to take note of in terms of service delivery. As he was charged with the responsibility of representing the mayor of Tswane Metro as well as the speaker. Speaker. We will now hand over to Minier Dubloy.
Thank you. Thank you Chair Nkosi Mandela. There's a lot of issues that has been mentioned that I realize as the chair rightfully said, is not about the bill itself, but it's matters that came out. And that is another part of public participation, that it's an opportunity to be heard. As I am a politician and I'm here, standing here for the mayor and for the speaker of the Tswane Metro, I do not want to be a popular politician who makes promises. The chairperson was absolutely correct when he mentioned the many matters. I noted a few and I will just mention them and then I will share with you how I think we should take note of all the issues and what we want to go and do with it and that will do with it. That's where I will make a promise. But yes, this is what I want to say now. I heard, for example, about the agri-park and the need for it. I know about it, I've been there quite a while ago. I know about other matters where there's a plea for producing vegetables and other products. So there's really a need for this agricultural development and what comes with it, the marketing of the products and in general economic development. It is not only that the bill is about the land and we've heard the word land and the issues about land over and over again. And of course, we need land to do this, to produce and to practice agricultural practices. So the ownership of land has come up again and again and I would like to address that because there where I'm from, I'm also the chairperson of the Tswane Properties Department and we would like to address that. We cannot act on private land, but I'm aware of the fact and I don't know, I must admit, I don't know how many of the properties and of the land in this region and throughout the city of Tswane belong to the city of Tswane and I'm specifically speaking about agricultural land. We've got other properties in town, but we've got lots and lots of agricultural land and it's important for me to go back and find out exactly where they are and what they are. I've also heard about issues referring to the market. Yes, we have this big market, but it's not always assisting the small farmers. So we will also go into that and see how the market, the market itself, the fresh produce market can assist not only the big farmers coming with the big trucks, but also the small farmers who's got small pieces of land where they do farm. Nkosi Chairperson, therefore, I think there's a long list that I don't have notes of. I didn't list all of them, there are so many more. And I would like to call upon and ask and humbly request the secretariat of your committee to provide us with a list of those issues that come forward. If it's a challenge, then we might just have, get the recording and note the different issues that were pointed out that needs attention by us in the Tswane Metro. If these, and not all of them will of course be solved, it's not always possible, but if these issues or most of them are solved, I can see it provides opportunities, opportunities of development, employment and food security. The issues that's actually basic, the fundamentals of this bill has got to do legal requirements and this we can't go into, it's not on the agenda of the city of Tswane, but when it comes to service delivery, as the chair rightfully said, we will then take that list and work through it. And I would like to suggest a way of doing it. So what I'm going to do, I am the chair of chairs, I deal with the different chairpersons of the different departments and I will, under the auspices of the speaker, because I'm here representing him, I will call a meeting and first do our research in terms of what I've just said, the agricultural land that belongs to the city. I would request that that list of issues be sent to the office of the speaker and that we will work through it and then I will get around the table and call them, the relevant political leader, the MMC, MMC Tswane, and especially the chairperson of this agricultural matters and then also the group head, Mr. Abol Malaka, I think many of you know him. If we've done that and we stop there, we will have failed the people of Region 7 and the farmers here. So after the meeting that we have and we might incorporate more people to come and assist us, maybe organization to give us advice about what can be done about all these, all these matters, feedback will be given and will be relayed back to all the councillors in the different wards where there are agricultural activity and they can then share it with the people that have brought it onto the table today. Honorable Chair, this is what I think can be done. If you have other suggestions, I'm ready to learn. You've gone through more of these exercises than me. So please advise, I'm really ready to listen and to take advice, please. Thank you so much. Thank you, Minier Dubloy, for your responses. Honorable members, allow me to therefore invite the officials of the department also to be able to tender their responses on what they've been able to pick up from these public hearings. So I'm going to invite the chief director in Hautein Province, Umamu Rachel Masango, to give her responses.
Good afternoon. Chairperson of the portfolio committee and the members of the portfolio committee, the Mukosi, Wassokulum and the other members from the council, I greet you all, including the community at large. As indicated... As indicated, my name is Rachel Masango and I'm responsible for the Hautein Province. And Chairperson, I have looked at the issues that were raised and I have almost half a book of issues that I have noted. I have however categorized them into a few categories that I think I must respond to and not respond to individual cases as such. As indicated, there's a lot of issues that were raised that relate to access to land for farming purposes. As the department, we do, we implement a program called proactive land acquisition. Proactive. Proactive. Land acquisitions. Land acquisitions. Where we buy properties and we make them available for lease purposes. And they can use those for agricultural purposes. And how we then make that available is that we, after acquisitions, we advertise the properties. And we use either our websites. A Department of Agriculture website which is D, it's a WWW. Dot D A L R R D. Dot D A L R I R D. Yes. Dot G O V dot Z A. Dot G O V dot Z A. Yes. When you go to the website, there is, at the bottom of the page, you'll see an area called Quick Links. Quick Links. Quick Links. Yes. And it will be most viewed pages. That's where you'll find the... Yes, you will see the access and forms to lease and then you can be able to scroll and check if there's any property that you might be interested in. Forms are also available on the website as well. It then guides in terms of how you will be able to submit your application. So that is for the people who are looking for access to land for agricultural purposes. However, if there is any other queries that people might have. See, we are based as an office in Akadia Pretoria. We are at number 524 St. Abu Pape. And Steve Bigos Street. And Steve Bigos Street. Yes, it's Ankhadia. It's Ankhadia. Yes, but I think most people do know the office. It's just across the street from the Southern Sun Hotel in Pretoria. But for those that also might want to make a call. You can call us at 012. Three three seven. Three three seven. Three six zero zero. Three six zero zero. Zero zero, yes. And we have, okay, sorry, it's a three three seven. Three three seven. Three six zero zero. Three six zero zero. We have client relations people that do assist. Thank you. There was also issues that were raised in relation to people who are residing on farms that do not belong to them. Not... No, people who are living on farms that don't belong to them, that belong to white farmers. Yes, they are farm workers or farm dwellers. There's issues that have been raised that relate to some conflicts. And sometimes there's limited rights. There's limits to rights that people already have on land. Some of the areas that have been raised here is that they might have limitations to access to the land that they were farming on. Am I right? No. Where they are being limited in terms of the access to the land that they were farming with? Maybe access to water is some of the issues that we usually get as well. And another area that was raised is access to the road facilities within the farms. The department manages the law called the Extension of Security of Tenure Act. The Extension of Security of Tenure, or ESTA. ESTA is the one that assists in regulating the rights of people that are living on farms as farm occupiers. We assist them then in getting interventions when there is challenges within the farms that they find themselves in. I would request later, Chairperson, if I can ask the team to stand so that they can be able to know who to talk to after this so that they can raise the specific issues. Even here, I would request that they can be able to link with them as well. I will also give out the toll-free number, the evictions toll-free number, if there are any evictions that people might experience as well. Aha. The other category that I have noted relates to... With access to inputs for farming. Inputs. Like fertilisers, seeds and stuff, yes. Yes. We have, we work with the Provincial Department of Agriculture. Edjedart, they are also here. They are also having their office in Pretoria. Pretoria Central, FED Show Building. FED Show, yes. FED Show Building. Building, yes. This building here, they are next to Isemimak Square. I'm sure people know Isemimak Square, so it's not far from there, yes. So people can be able to approach them to get assistance and guidance in terms of how they can be able to get access to input costs and mechanisation and things like that. For restitution cases, there's a few people who raised issues about restitution. I am not sure if the office of the restitution office is in the building today. However, there is information that they can provide in terms of the claims that have been lodged in Hautein, in terms of the progress that has been made in each of those claims. Bonna, they are based in number 9 Bailey Lane. Aha, Akadia. And their numbers are 012... Three one zero. Three one zero. Six five. Six five. Zero zero. Zero zero. I will repeat again, three one zero. Three one zero. Six five zero zero. Six five zero zero. If you can call them as well, they will be able to give information in relation to cases that they are working on and the progress thereof. There were issues that were raised relating to access to land from the Traditional Authority and the municipality. The Traditional Authority, Sokulumi, do have an office where people can be able to approach them to have access to land. Nagedi is around here who can be able to provide information as well. I will request him to make himself available after the session. If you look at some of the areas that we are operating in as the department, some of them have been made available through the Traditional Authority or the city as well itself. The issue that were raised with the agri-parks and FPSUs to say we must increase the farmer support units that we are operating in. Aha. Some of those areas are located in land that is owned by the local municipality or the city of Tswane. The city of Tswane, yes. And the other one is under the Sokulumi Traditional Authority, which is the Sokulumi FPSU. So access can be received through those means as well. And if we... I must raise, Chairperson, there is a specific issue that was raised where there is conflict between our own leases on farms and farm dwellers. Abakashen dawo from our department. Yes, yes, from the department. We try and mediate through those cases as the department. Supported by the different organisations that we do work with in the province. However, if we are unable to resolve those challenges... We also do support for, to get mediation intervention through legal aid because that's what the department works with. Finally, if I can maybe share the evictions hotline for those that might experience challenges with the interruption of their stay on farms during any time. The eviction hotline is 0800... The hotline number is 0800... Double zero seven. Double zero seven. Zero nine five. Zero nine five. That number can be called at any time and then they will contact us to be able to intervene day or night with support, people who are being evicted on farms. I would like to request, Chairperson, as I conclude, my team to stand that are coming from the Provincial Health Service Centre Hautein. So that they can, the community can see them and be able to approach them after the session. There's a team this side and that side. If you can stand, please, colleagues. Thank you. Those are the people that you can contact and pull aside to give your issues to and we can take them forward. I thank you.
Allow me to invite Umamur Bosoka to also come forward. And also give her responses. The interpreters are asking we come forward a bit so that it can be easily captured on the camera. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson of the Portfolio Committee. Good afternoon to members of the committee, Portfolio Committee, the Royal Highness present here, Traditional Authority, the Council of Tswane, and also residents of Brongor Strait. ... Indeed, we are also grateful as the officials of the department to be present here, to be able to hear how the people feel about the preservation and development of agricultural land bill drafted. As indicated, I'm going to only focus on the issues that have been raised in relation to the bill itself. There was a concern which was raised in relation to mining and manufacturing companies which then affect the environment and ultimately the food safety. And therefore would like to indicate that in this bill it's focused on looking into the balanced approach of utilising the land. We acknowledge that agricultural land is limited and therefore there is competing use and some of those uses are mining. And with this bill, we are looking into having agricultural sector plans in which we can be able to say, these are the areas that we have looked and evaluated and those are the ones which can be used for agricultural production, while areas which are having low production can then be used for other uses. So the bill makes provision for agroecosystem and authorisation of certain activities before commencement. So activities that are going to affect that agroecosystem, for example, if you are using wetlands next to you, you are farming, and there's an activity that is going to come and be in the middle of that wetland which is going to affect your water for your irrigation. Those are the activities that we refer to as being discouraged. There was also a concern in relation to if you have a land and you want to sell, and you want to subdivide that portion of land because you are not utilising it. The bill is going to continue with approval of subdivision of agricultural land. However, there will be studies that are conducted in advance to inform every land user that if you are having this portion, this is very high agricultural land. And therefore the department will not easily approve such application. So in this regard, subdivisions will still be consented, but there will be information which guide farmers in advance not to apply for areas that are of high value agricultural land for subdivision. There was also a concern around this bill if it favours the minority people. This bill is focusing on all farmers. The bill, its intention is to ensure that where there is currently grazing and cultivation, such continue with government supporting them. Hence, the bill makes provision for agricultural sector plan where we are going to monitor both the support and the land that we continue to develop across the country. The last area that I would like to speak to is in relation to the principle of equitability which some of the members raised. The principle of equitability in the bill. The principle that has been cited there is intended to ensure that if we are developing regulations, those are developed in a fair and it takes care of other interests of the local people or local farmers. That is also intended to have a understandable relationship between other users of land such as mining and housing and other users of land in that area. So generally, the bill is also going to help in provision of information for also those who did not have information previously, especially in communal areas where there is no farm plants and so forth. especially in communal areas where there is no farm plants and so forth. Currently, if you want to know what is the suitability and potential of the land, you do not have such information in most communities, and this limit the partnership that you can get out to support in farming that portions. So this is going to assist all of the farmers to be able to know the potential of their area by providing them information that they are going to be able to select crops that are suitable for their area to make more profit out of the land. So in that short input, Chairperson, we like to appreciate the time that we have been allocated to share some of the responses, and we will continue to work with the Provincial Department in facilitating some of the enabling environment to support farmers.
Thank you, Umambo Masango, as well as Umambo Bosoka, for your responses as officials of the department. We would like to also appreciate the attendance of all the officials of the department who came to attend these public hearings. Often, our people do not get an opportunity to engage directly with officials of the department and get the needs attended to. So as the Portfolio Committee, we want to appreciate you being here. But I must also welcome all the oral submissions that have been received today on the Preservation and Development of Agricultural Land Bill. Abas also clarified that we as parliament are not government. A lot of citizenry in South Africa always speak as parliament is an enabler or an implementer, whereas it is the Department of Agriculture, Land Reform and Rural Development that implements government's programs. We must put it therefore to you that as parliament, we hold the department accountable and carry oversight on the work that the department does. And this is why in these public hearings, we felt it necessary to bring the department with us so that they can be able to respond to the other issues that you have raised. It is of concern then in public hearings when you hear that we are dealing with some of the officials that are fraudulent and that find themselves not being of service to our people and become corrupt officials. It is therefore in your duty to ensure that those officials, you are able to report directly to the department through the minister, and if not, you can be able to report directly to the Portfolio Committee through our secretariat. To our secretariat of the Portfolio Committee. We therefore want to assure you that the issues that were raised pertaining the department, we will be following them up with the department and ensuring that they are able to respond to the plight of our communities. But as a Portfolio Committee, as we conclude our work here in Bronco Sprate, we are still having two other areas to visit here in Khauteng. Tomorrow, we are in Mahalisbeck, and on Friday, we'll be in Heidelbeck. Having concluded our work in Khauteng, we will then be embarking to the remaining provinces, which is the Free State, the Western Cape, the Eastern Cape, and Gwazulu Natal. And having gone to all provinces, we will then, as the Portfolio Committee, be inviting the department to come before the committee in parliament and give its responses to the public hearings. Once the department has given its input as the Portfolio Committee on Agriculture, Land Reform and Rural Development in the National Assembly, we will table a report that we will be able to present to the House. The National Assembly will then refer the bill to the National Council of Provinces. Which is led in the Select Committee by Honorable Modise, who will then embark on their own processes of attending to the bill. Once it has concluded its work, the N C O P will then send the bill back to Parliament. Which will be sent to His Excellency, the President of the Republic of South Africa, His Excellency President Ramaphosa. Then it will be signed into law. So as the people of Bronco Sprate, today, you've actually participated in lawmaking. You can therefore give yourself a round of applause. But I must also state that the issues that you have raised pertaining the work of the department. We would certainly like to follow up on that. And be able to respond to you on that. And therefore, those that have pens to write, you can take the details of the secretariat of the Portfolio Committee on Agriculture, Land Reform and Rural Development. As having introduced them earlier, we have Umambo Kakaza, who we asked to stand so you can see here. A mobile number. It's 083.
083.
709.
709.
8391.
8391.
I repeat, 083. 709.
709.
8391.
8391.
And her email address. It's A Kakaza. At parliament.
At parliament.
Dot gov dot z a. I repeat, A Kakaza. At parliament.
Dot parliament.
At parliament.
At parliament.
Dot gov dot z a. Then we have our second secretariat. Umambo Nyamza. Pakama Bakbo Anemachate.
Just raised. So there they see you.
Her name is Pumla Nyamza. She is reachable on the following number. 083.
083.
709.
709.
8492.
8492.
I repeat, 083. 709.
709.
8492.
8492.
Her email address is P Nyamza. At parliament.
At parliament.
Dot gov dot z a.
Dot gov dot z a.
I repeat, P Nyamza. At parliament.
At parliament.
Dot gov dot z a.
Dot gov dot z a.
You may be able, if you desire, to cc me into the email. And my email is simple. Chief Mandela.
Chief Mandela.
At gmail dot com.
At gmail dot com.
I repeat. Chief Mandela.
Chief Mandela.
At gmail dot com.
At gmail dot com.
I often used to give my cell number. But I find often you are phoning me to give me something that you should be giving me in writing. In writing. Because as a Portfolio Committee, it makes our work easy to follow up something that is written. This is why we insist that you write and send an email to our secretariat. So when we take up the issues with the minister, we have a record of them. We can be able to speak to something that is written. I therefore want to insist that you send us written correspondence. I had in the proceedings a lot of reference to kings and kings and kings. But it would put me in a lot of trouble if I don't clarify this on my side. Me am not King Mandela. The King of Abatimbu in our Madiba tribe or nation is His Majesty King Zulibanzi Talinge. Tina, we are just chiefs Amakosi under his kingship. So I must also ensure that when you refer to me, So I would appreciate that you keep to that. And officials of the department that are here. Our people are unable to reach you when they need to access your assistance. And therefore, as Umambo Masango said, she's here with an entire entourage of the department. Must be consistent in keeping a record of people's names. It's Umambo Masango. So that we are able to bring her and her officials in front here, and they must be able to give you their details. So when you have a crisis, you are able to reach them. It's very painful to witness our people being prevented in the farms that they reside in to not be able to access their family graves. As Africans, you would understand the importance of a grave. And the symbolism of cleaning a grave. And speaking to your ancestors. Therefore, we employ the officials of the department to intervene on behalf of our communities. We would like to thank the entire community of Bronco Sprate for having taken time to be with us today. And having been able to participate in these public hearings. Those that still wish to make written submissions. You can send your written submissions through the secretariat. This therefore brings us to the end of our proceedings. And this official sitting of parliament has come to an end, and the session is adjourned. I'm told that there is lunch that has been prepared for us. So I would request that we move in a very orderly manner. Giving the first our traditional leaders to be able to get their food. And I would request young people in particular to enable our elders to get their food. And then we can all be able to have our lunch. There is sufficient food for everyone that is seated here. So let's therefore move in orderly manner. Give preference to our elders. Thank you.